It's six o'clock. It's time to start our meeting. We have a full house tonight. A full, full house. We do have a quorum. Mrs. LaBreck is not with us right now. She does plan to join us if possible. There she is.
She's joining us virtually.
Great. She's joining us virtually.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. LaBreck. I'd like to call Mr. Leonard Peace to lead us in our invocation.
That was Bow. Father, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. I ask that as we deliberate the business of the school system, let us do what's in the best interest of the children that we serve and all the others that we serve. This I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Dr. Lindsay, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please stand.
My pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on our agenda is a presentation to our outgoing board member for District Five, Dr. Gregory McKnight.
On behalf of the Graham County Board of Education and for the children of Graham County Public Schools, we thank you for your service. You stepped up and served your district. That we're grateful. Through all these years, we wish you well in all endeavors in the future. And you're welcome to come back any time. You're welcome down to the phone and answer questions. We appreciate you and your families.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like for us to go around the table and our board members can say a few words. Dr. McKnight?
Thank you. Dr. McKnight, it's been a pleasure having you work with us on this board. Your insightfulness and ability to work with others has been great, and I appreciate that. And I wish whatever you do, you're always welcome to come back and you can have my seat sometime. But I wish you much success as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McKnight, we've only been together probably about three meetings here, but I always enjoy your comments. You think, I guess, outside the box, you always have the kids in mind, wish you very, very best and enjoy your time away from the board. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, Greg, limited experience on the board with you, but you're always very honest and helpful, both to me and to the community with the things that you said. I felt every time you spoke, it was very authentic and from a good place, and you're always thinking about the kids in your community, and I always appreciate that about you.
And I would just like to say, you've been a mentor, and I really have enjoyed working with you even the short time that I have, and learned a lot, learned a lot from you, and just, you know, wish you the best, you and family the best, and gonna miss you. Thank you.
On a personal note, I will never forget celebrations. We all thought we knew how to spell very well, and we did pretty well, but we have some studying to do before next year. I've enjoyed getting to know you as a person. I've appreciated your professionalism, your wisdom, and your willingness to help out, and we'll miss you. Thank you so much.
So, Dr. McKnight, on behalf of all of the children and the employees you've so diligently served, we thank you for your service for the past two years on this Board of Education. So here's your placard so that you may always remember your time with us and a small token of appreciation. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
It is now time for the swearing in. May we have the judge? And may we have Mrs. Danielle Hayes and the individual will be holding your bibles. Congratulations. Fantastic. I did the exact same thing. You will put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, Danielle Hayes, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Grahamville County Board of Education? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Thank you so very much. Congratulations. Thank you for doing that. We got three. Austin, she needs a judge's kid, and so she doesn't refuse to listen to us. One last word. Welcome to the Board of Education. Sure, sweetie. I'll stand right here. So, Ms. Hayes, on behalf of the children, the educators, our executive teams, and everyone at Graham County Public Schools, first, we're going to give you the official star pin for you to join the team. We know this star means something to us. The five points are extremely important to the standards we have and what it means for us to educate the children. It is fine for the R T. And we just want to say welcome aboard, and I'm happy to take you to your seats so that we may get it for you. Thank you. All right. It's already there. Our meeting's picked up. Do you have your agendas? They just got this out. You might hear it in the chat. Just right there. And also, they...
Our next item on our agenda is the election of the chairman and the vice chairman, and at this time, this will be turned over to Dr. McLean to handle.
Thank you so very much, Mrs. Williams. In a moment, I will call for nominations for the office of the Chair of the Grahamville County School Board of Education. Nominations do not require a second. If more than one person is nominated, the board will vote on nominees in order of nomination. The first person to receive a majority of board members present is elected the chair. Nominations are in order for the office of board chair. Are there any nominations?
Madam Superintendent, I would like to nominate Mr. Brenda Williams.
Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations for the office of board chair are closed. Just turn my page. Not Brenda. My goodness, I've renamed her, Brenda Williams. All those in favor of Ms. Glenda Williams as chair, please say aye. All of those opposed, please say no. Do we have the exact names? Very good. All right.
Is Mrs. LaBreck still on?
Is Mrs. LaBreck still with us?
Yes, I said aye.
Thank you. Mrs...
I'm sorry. Where did you catch her vote?
Do you have the vote?
Ms. LaBreck, what was your vote?
I said aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. So I believe that's two opposed. Is that my turn or do you have a say? Okay. Mrs. Glenda Williams is elected chair by a vote of five to two. I will now pass the gavel back to Mrs. Glenda Williams. Congratulations on being the board chair for the Grahamville County Public Schools Board of Education.
Thank you for your confidence in me and for everyone. We will work hard together. Nominations are now in order for office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, I nominate Amanda LaBreck for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations for the office of board chair are closed.
Just turn my page. Mrs. Brenda Williams. Not Brenda. My goodness, I've renamed her, Brenda Williams. All those in favor of Ms. Glenda Williams as chair, please say aye. All of those opposed, please say no. Do we have the exact names? Very good. All right.
Is Mrs. LaBreck still on?
Is Mrs. LaBreck still with us?
Yes, I said aye.
Thank you. Mrs...
I'm sorry. Where did you catch her vote?
Do you have the vote?
Ms. LaBreck, what was your vote?
I said aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. So I believe that's two opposed. Is that my turn or do you have a say? Okay. Mrs. Glenda Williams is elected chair by a vote of five to two. I will now pass the gavel back to Mrs. Glenda Williams. Congratulations on being the board chair for the Grahamville County Public Schools Board of Education.
Thank you for your confidence in me and for everyone. We will work hard together. Nominations are now in order for office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, I nominate Amanda LaBreck for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations for office of vice chair are closed. Those in favor of Amanda LaBreck as vice chair say aye. Those opposed, say no.
Aye.
Who said aye?
If you could just do a hand count.
Let's do a hand count.
Okay.
Those opposed, likewise.
Mr. Peace, you are our new vice chair for the coming year.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, you need to ask all in favor. I'm sorry.
All in favor of Mr. Peace as vice chair, say aye.
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 I would do the hand count then.
Let's do the hand count again. Okay, Mr. Peace, you are the vice chair for the coming year.
Excuse me. Can you speak up here or anything that's going on back here?
Can you hear me fairly well?
Not really.
Tech team, may we turn the microphones up a little bit, please?
Our next item on the agenda is the adjustment of the agenda. Do we have any items that need to be adjusted or added?
I would like to add something. I would like to revisit potentially the seating of the board meetings here now that, I guess, social distancing is over. There's a lot of people, whenever they come and bless us with their presence from the public, that aren't able to sit because we're still honoring social distancing with the chair placement, and I would like for us to revisit that.
Madam Chair, may we make that item number eight point zero eight?
Okay. Sounds good.
Eight point zero eight.
Point of inquiry. Okay. For clarification. So, just for clarification, is there any reason, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is there any reason why we don't follow the order of the agenda that's in our policy code book?
You just discussed that.
We'll discuss that.
Yes, that was recently discussed. Well, it was recently discussed at Policy Committee that hasn't been the practice of the board for some time, so the committee was looking at updating the policy.
Okay. Is that one that's on the agenda tonight?
Oh, it may be on tonight. I don't think so. I think it's on for next month. It's Policy 2330.
Yeah, we discussed that when we were in the policy meeting. That's a good point. So hopefully, if it's not on there tonight, it will be on there next week.
No, it's not on for tonight, but it is up for discussion next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I have a question? Could we know what needs to be changed or revised about it before the meeting?
So, Policy 2330 contains an order of business and then states by consensus of the board, items may be considered out of order. So, the board has, you know, the board can vote to adopt the agenda as it wishes. I'm not sure I answered your question yet.
No, because my question was, I guess we need to study what it is now and make the necessary adjustments if there need be so. I mean, it's something we have to vote on, I would think, once everybody knows what it is now and what you're asking for it to be.
Well, just for clarification, just to answer his question, I just was looking at the policy and noticed that our agenda order of items was very different than what is listed in our policy code, and I believe it was probably Ms. Williams herself who said once, what is the point in having a policy if we're not going to follow it?
That's why we're having the Policy Committee go through the entire policy manual, and it's been a process. In fact, the last time we met was right before the last board session, I believe it was, and we went through several, and it took a while because we're trying to make sure that what we do is reflected in the policies and vice versa. So that process is in there.
Great.
Let me know if you're interested on that committee.
I am. I am. We can talk later.
Thank you. Thank you. It's amazing you can get into a policy and read it, and it takes some time to see if it reflects what you really want.
Right. And that's why we're doing that.
Madam Chairwoman, we also have an adjustment, eight point zero seven. It has been added but may be deleted. It came up this morning in executive team session. It was not posted on Thursday, so I need to present it as an item to be added tonight, class size waiver. The state needs this as an action item, so I'm bringing this to you tonight. Mr. Perry will be sharing.
So let me recap. We will be doing the size of the room, the table configuration, and we will be doing the class size. Those are the only two.
Yes, ma'am. Eight point seven and eight point zero eight.
Our next item on the agenda is special recognitions and presentations. I'm sorry. We got ahead of myself here. We do need a motion to approve the agenda since we did make some changes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special recognitions and presentations, the best part of the night.
Yes, ma'am. I'll turn that over to Dr. McLean. Thank you so very much, Madam Chairwoman. December is always an exciting time for Grahamville County Public Schools because we get to showcase a lot of our students and staff, and this evening will be no different. Dr. Winborn, we have some youngsters who have been excited about the area of art. We're going to showcase them tonight. Board members, at your seats this evening, you have copies of the holiday card winners. You have those cards at your seat as a gift from the district, and I hope you enjoy them as much as we've enjoyed looking at the work of our children. So, Ms. Amy Rice and Dr. Winborn, I turn it over to you at this time.
Good evening, board members. Thank you. This is one of the most exciting times, and I'm so blessed that I get to showcase the talent that we have in our district. Before we bring up our elementary, middle school, and high school holiday card winners, if we, I think I have a presentation that we can share. Because it was tough to narrow down and find these, so you'll find these in your board docs, but just to share with those at home as well. Here are examples of our elementary schools and the honorable mentions from there. We have several different schools represented within there. Zoe Daniel from Tar River, Gabrielle Moncalla from Mount Energy. Thank you. Caroline Caseres from Tar River, and Emilia Rizendez from Stovall Shaw Elementary School. So these were from all of our K-2 students, and these are just honorable mentions, but they did an outstanding job. And next, that was middle school. I'm sorry, let's go back to elementary. We skipped elementary. That was middle school. There we go. So from our middle school honorable mentions, we have Sushi Gomez from Butlersthem Middle School, Donica Milton from Grahamville Academy, Tyler Jastro from Butlersthem Middle School, and also Brianna Grotto from Butlersthem Middle School. So here's their work as our honorable mention. And then our high schools, we have Milka Torres Vasquez from South Grahamville. She's a senior there. Callie Galdevez from J F Webb, Hae Sue Smalldonato Alvarez from J F Webb, and then Chapman Burnett, also from J F Webb. So these are all of our honorable mentions, and they did an outstanding job. And before we recognize those who won overall, I will tell you, everyone at the district level, at central office, as the central office staff, participate in selecting these, and it gets quite, they get quite eager to find out who the winner is, and I keep it a secret until tonight as well, so just to congratulate these students. So if we have here Madison Robbins, we have invited all of our families to come forward. So Madison, this is her work. Congratulations to Madison. And Madison, I wanted to give the card as a heater. So that she can see how all of our board members had your design made into a card for Grahamville County Schools. So excellent work. And don't leave because I have a surprise for your teacher because you did so well. All right? So stay right there. Next, from our middle school, we have Avery McGar from Butlersthem Middle School. And our high school winner is Chapman Burnett. You will have heard that name as one of the honorable mentions as well. And because their teachers also encouraged them to do this work and their staff, because they are winners, we have supplies for each school. You'll see over there washful markers, crayons, scissors, glue, and also construction paper that because you all won, you will be able to let your teacher know that they have goodies to come to them. So congratulations.
Okay, our next recognition is the Grahamville Ed Foundation Literacy Program Check Presentation.
Thank you so much. Dr. Winborn, I believe we have the Grahamville Ed Foundation with us tonight. This is something they've done since I've been here, and I'm just so grateful for the support for our schools in the area of literacy. So I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Tonight, we're very grateful to have representatives from the Grahamville Ed Foundation on hand to present a very large sum of money. And at this time, I would like to ask all elementary school principals to please approach the podium. Please approach the podium. All elementary school principals, come on up. Very good. And I will next allow Ms. Jennifer Cofallo, the Executive Director of the Grahamville Ed Foundation, to present the awards.
Hi, everybody. We told you at Price Patrol, we had money for you. Each year, we are blessed to be able to give each elementary school $1,000 in literacy initiatives, so we are awarding you guys your grant for $1,000 tonight. Thank you so much for all you do for our children. We hope this goes to good use.
All right. You want to get a picture?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Big smile. All right. And would any of the members of the board like to say a few words?
We're just here to support the schools, and so support Grahamville Ed, and we give it back to you. Thank you.
And we thank you all so very much. Thank you. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Our next presentation is for the Board of Education, a Master Board Training.
Thank you so much. This is an exciting award because it's taken several years to accomplish this task, but our board is also about professional growth and development. And Dr. Winborn, let me turn this over to you because I think we need to honor our board this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McLean. At the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference held back in November, at which many of our board members and Dr. McLean were present, several Grahamville County Public Schools students received awards for their artwork that was entered into the North Carolina School Board Association poster contest, and we represented quite well, I must say. Ms. Leila Bachelor, a kindergartner at Butlersthem Elementary School, received a first-place prize. That's right. So come on up, Leila. Come on up. I believe your principal is here, so if the two of you guys would come on up.
Yes.
Yes. Absolutely.
This is incredible.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there were about 444 entries, so we were excited.
You're right. And she beat them all. We were so proud, sweetie.
Yes, you did so good. This is the blue ribbon. This was, yes, and so it's on the poster board, but this was her perfect, perfect design. You did so good. You get a first-place ribbon. And then the state sent you a certificate as well, and you get a lovely art set so that you can continue to do all of your artwork. Congratulations.
It was incredible. Mrs. Williams, our board chairwoman, got to go on stage and to accept the honor on her behalf, but I'll tell you, sweetheart, you beat all of the others, and Grahamville County Public Schools is so very proud of you. You're absolutely wonderful.
So we also had some honorable mentions as well.
Yes, we did.
Joanna Ladin Ponse, the fifth grader from Butlersthem Elementary School.
Yes.
Also.
Yes.
And William Ford, fifth grader from Butlersthem Elementary School.
Yes.
And all of the Mount Energy Art Students for a big collaborative poster that they put together, that's third through fifth grade. Congratulations. Congratulations to them as well.
Congratulations, students. You are magnificent, and we're so very proud of all of you. Let's take a big picture. Let's take a picture together. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And even though the State Superintendent's Association gave the prize to the first-place winner, we did not want our honorable mentions to not have something as well. So I have my first recognition.
And we want to say thank you to all of our amazing art teachers and all of our principals and assistant principals who've helped make this happen. Thank you so very much because we want all of our children to find their gifts and excel in their areas. Thank you. Our next area, we sort of inverted this just a little bit. We want to talk about master board training, if we could. There you go. We're going to put that one back up. Dr. Winborn, let's do this one next, if we may.
Thank you, Dr. McLean. So again, at the same conference, the North Carolina School Board Association Conference held in November, the board received an award for achievement of Master Board Level One status. And of course, Chairwoman Glenda Williams, Mr. Leonard Peace, and Superintendent Alyssa McLean accepted the award on the board's behalf. And you can see the photo that was taken onstage there for this state-level recognition.
What's important about this award is our entire board worked to achieve this goal. We were just the representatives present at the conference. Is there anything you'd like to add or say, Mrs. Williams or Mr. Peace?
Well, I think the training that we avail ourselves to is very good. We learn from each other. We learn from presenters, and I think it's something great. And I know our two new board members are headed to some training in a week or two. So enjoy it, and it will be very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Peace doesn't have anything to say, but I'll tell you what I learned right away. As a past president, he certainly was guiding quite a few individuals there. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Okay. We have some special recognitions in the field of athletics, so.
That's right. We're excited. And our district athletic director is with us this evening. Coach, we turn it over to you at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, board members, Chair, Dr. McLean, executive staff. I see the Holy Bible up here, so I don't know if I need to get out my napkin and get long-winded or keep it brief. So we'll keep it brief to get everybody their recognition tonight. We had a lot of recognitions across the county this year when it comes to athletic awards, but we had a few conference, regional, and state-level awards that exemplify among the others. First tonight, I would like to recognize a few individuals from South Granville High School. First up would be Mr. Nehemiah Hunter. He was awarded the Football Defensive Lineman of the Year Award for the Athletic Conference. That's a pretty big accomplishment when you look at our football conference. So he was unable to attend tonight, but we do want to recognize him. Next, I'd like to bring up Ms. Kristen Sparks. She's the head volleyball coach at South Granville High School to recognize our two players.
Thank you for allowing me to come tonight to introduce two amazing athletes I've had the pleasure to coach this year. Both of them were big leaders in our team who brought us tons of success. First is Madison Staton. She received the All-State Team from the NCVBCA. That's the North Carolina Volleyball Coaches Association. Second is Samantha Petrowski. She received the All-Regional Team from the North Carolina Volleyball Association.
Okay. Next up, due to the number of participants, we're going to skip down to number four for J.F. Webb High School. I'm going to throw a little kink in the plan to stand here. I'd like to bring up Ms. Kelly Anderson, the head cross-country coach for the men's team at J.F. Webb, and recognize her, and I believe she had a couple of team members here, won tonight, for their honor in receiving one of, in my opinions, the most prestigious awards when it comes to athletics, and that's sportsmanship. They received Sportsmanship Team of the Year for the Athletic Conference. All right. Next up, I'm going to surround the podium here with a lot of folks, your 2A Northern Athletic Conference, Northern Lakes Athletic Conference volleyball champions. If all those ladies could come up, then we'll recognize a few individuals. All right. As they're approaching the podium, I'm going to recognize Coach Lisa Mize. She was awarded this year's North Carolina Volleyball Coaches Association Coach of the Year Award for 2A classification, and that is for the entire state of North Carolina. That is a state-level award.
Good evening. We are so happy to be here tonight. I've been wanting these girls to get the recognition that they deserve for a really long time. Last year, we didn't get to come because of COVID, but they were also the champions last year. But tonight, the first person I'm going to recognize is Ms. Chapman Burnett. She is All-Region for the state of North Carolina, as well as for our conference, the Northern Lakes Conference. She was named the Defensive Player of the Year. And next, I'm going to recognize Ms. Courtney Williams. She also is North Carolina All-Region, and she was named by the Northern Lakes Conference as the Player of the Year. She is also going on to play at the next level on a full scholarship at Presbyterian And in support of their teammates or some of the other players, and they received all conference honors as well. So very proud of them.
Thank you, ladies. Congrats on a good season. All right. Next up, I'd like to bring up Patrick Vincent. He's the A.D. at Butlerston Middle School. As he's approaching the podium with his players, I'd like to add that very seldom do middle school athletics get recognized at a board meeting. And I feel that it's important that they don't have the state and national level of recognition, but we can do it here in Granville County. So that's the reason I invited them tonight. So please welcome Patrick Vincent.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and to share with you the great news that we shared with our All-Stars. Our first All-Star was Haley Whitfield. She's a former three sports star and now is a two-sports star. Our reigning Female Athlete of the Year, Haley Whitfield, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. She is very shy, and there's no way I would be able to get her in front of all y'all like Now, we have our three MAC-10 All-Stars. MAC-10 stands for Middle School Athletic Conference. It is the combination of all of the middle schools in Franklin County, Granville County, and Vance County. These three gentlemen, all three of them have been playing at the school since their seventh-grade year. Unfortunately, the sixth-grade year did not work out so well for them, but they were on the undefeated team last year. The, we went 9-0 and won the conference title last year. Should have been All-Stars last year, but we didn't have All-Stars. First All-Stars from the soccer team at Butlerston Middle School, you have Edwin Campos Nunez, Van Perez Jenkins, and Michael Crainen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach Carroll.
My God, wasn't that wonderful?
Next on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. McLean?
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman. I'm so excited after seeing all of that and hearing all of that because I believe that is indicative of the work across the span of our district, not in any one area, but a multifaceted and array of areas of the work being done across the districts. That's exciting. So good evening, once again, to all of our board members, our parents, students, students, Granville County Public Schools staff, guests, friends, and those tuning in with us. What a remarkable evening we've had thus far. I'm truly, truly excited about our red carpet honorees and our new board member who's joining us tonight. We finally have a full board at capacity once again. Took us just a moment, but we are back at it. Congratulations to everyone who was honored this evening. At your seats, board members, in addition to the cards you have, you have a stack of winter books, and these are the winter books our youngsters will be receiving. You know literacy is big in Granville County Public Schools, so these are some of the titles some of our students will be receiving over the winter break. So when your colleagues and neighbors and friends are talking with you about the books and the packages the babes get over winter break, you can share with them. Yes, we know. And here are some of the titles. You might even want to share your stack with a youngster or two you know. So we're excited about that. You have that at your seat tonight. Since we last met for a formal meeting, there's been a lot going on in Granville County Public Schools. There's been a great deal of excitement, and the excitement has been in an array of areas, teaching and learning in a variety of classrooms in multiple ways. We've had wonderful creativity with science through coding. I hope some of you participated in the coding events we've had. Field trips have been rebounded throughout the district. We've had a first round of ambassador meetings with students, principals, parents, and teachers. Those are always most informative. We've had art excellence you've seen exemplified tonight, state and conference awards in arts and the athletics. We've had a college application week and individual information for our students moving on to the next level there. We've had data room development and used continuous PLC work. An amazing EOC boot camp took place this past Saturday for our high schoolers, and we're excited about the businesses that invested in our young people with gift cards to help them make the decision to come on out and to get some tutoring before they launch into their end-of-semester exams because we wish our high schoolers the very best as they bring this semester to a close. Lots going on, but I want to remind everyone not to forget our winter graduation on January 12th at 6:00 p.m. That is always a special time in our district, and I'm super excited. This is something I brought when I came here, and that winter graduation is just as important as all of the others to me because, you know, sometimes you have to do it at your own speed. So this is no less important than any other graduation. These youngsters are excited, and I heard we have roughly 50. So that's exciting to me. Now, the holiday season is upon us, and our schools have been preparing to celebrate various cultures, diversity, and customs for this season over the next few weeks. And I invite all of you to join in the fun by attending one of our schools, the Winter Wonderland Experiences, and our chorus and band concerts. The students and teachers have been working exceptionally hard preparing for all of us in the community. Thus far, the events have been nothing short of splendid, so I look forward to the continuous wonderment I know you're in store for. I'm also excited about the morning shows that have been rejuvenated across the district. And some of you may say, "Dr. McLean, why does that excite you so much?" Because it allows our students the opportunity not just to read, because, you know, reading is important to me, but they are learning to use those skills of speaking, interviewing people, talking, not being ashamed in front of a camera, and communication skills. So morning shows are well underway in our schools this month. So lots going on, but here's where I need your help as a community. We are working really hard with restorative justice and character and kindness. You know we have big events at the end of the year, but there's been a lot going on in our community, and you know that translates into school. So I'm asking everyone for their assistance in the area, an area that comes across my desk far too often for me, and that's in the area of student discipline. I had the same conversation when I looked back at my notes from last December, so it was the same time of year. And here is what I'd like to do. I'd like to solicit support once again, not only from our parents and guardians, because the issue is bigger than that. I'm asking everyone in our community, civic groups, and organizations, and churches, and clubs, to assist us all in our community with helping us with this heavy lift, and let's do it together. Let's have the same language about what happens when you hit the doors of the school because what's okay at home or in a community might not be okay when everyone gets together in school. And our student code of conduct will be followed for those who don't follow the rules. I want to be very clear about that. It doesn't make me happy to have to do that, but we have that in place because we must keep our schools safe and orderly. And we will continue to work with law enforcement for those things that involve levels on that level. It's about as kind as I can say that piece, but I want us all on the same page when it comes to safety and orderliness, and I just know we can do it if we do it together. Life is real, and we need to cherish it. We need to cherish it, and we need to teach our children to cherish it. The leadership word for this month is caring, and we just made a video about it. So over the holidays and the next few weeks, I'm asking everyone to focus on being a little kinder and caring a little bit more about mankind and about one another. You know, when I was growing up, I heard things like "Sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me." And I venture to think that just isn't true. Words and actions and behaviors do hurt, but we're here to help. So if you overhear conversations that are not appropriate, if you overhear and see frustration and anger concerning notes or texts from children, please reach out to your child's teacher or principal, or school resource officer, or a guidance counselor, and let us intervene. We can do this together. Now, I don't want to send the message that everything is going wrong because you just saw some amazing children in this room, and the vast majority of our schools have some fantastic young people. But I want everyone, not just some, I want everyone doing well. So let's join together and make this happen. Now, I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our student leaders. You guys, if you're watching, you're doing an amazing job in our schools. I'm looking at the activities and hearing about all of the wonderful events, and I just want to say thank you to you. And hats off to your leaders in the schools for allowing you to have the leverage to be those young student leaders. I'm also, once again, wanting to say thank you to the Granville Ed Foundation for tonight's literacy donation. You have no idea how important those funds are. Early learning, early reading lasts a lifetime, so thank you for continuing to invest in us. So my last wish is while we are away for winter break in just a few short weeks, I do want to remind everyone to encourage all of our students pre-K through grade 12 to read, read, and read. And let's let a book of some type take all of us to a place where we might want to go. May each of you have an incredible holiday season filled with peace, joy, hope, and happiness. Season's greetings to all of you. Madam Chairwoman, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. McLean. Tonight, we have honored teachers, students, and coaches for success, hard work, teamwork, and talent. This part of our board meeting is absolutely every board member's favorite item on the agenda. First, it is wonderful to celebrate the success of First, it is wonderful to celebrate the success of students and their teachers and coaches, but just as important, it is always a reminder that when we look at data, reports, numbers, and budgets, everything we do is about our students and those who educate them. I'll take a moment to just say tonight was a little special for me. She's left now, but one of my former students was recognized, volleyball coach. We never know the paths our students will take and when we might see them again, but teachers are very excited when they see young people achieve as adults. Our teachers do what they do because they care about children. Let us all remember to support and show appreciation for our teachers. We just finished Thanksgiving, but we need to do that appreciation the entire year. As Dr. McLean said, the holiday break will be here soon. It seems like the year is speeding by, and the coming new year is fast approaching. Our next regular Monday night board meeting will be on January 9th, so on behalf of the board, I want to wish everyone here and online a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you. And I think the next thing we need to do is hear some other reports. The only committee I'm aware of that actually met since the last meeting was the Policy Committee, and we met right before our board meeting. And those items, some of those items will be on the agenda later tonight in the consent Do we have anyone else on the board that would like to make a report tonight?
Yes, excuse me, yes, Madam Chair, I would like to do that. As you remember, the last meeting of our work session, I said that I would report on the couple of sessions that I attended at the conference this past month, and I actually attended a session on how local board members can ensure that every student can succeed. And from this, I got board members across the state should work tirelessly to make every student they serve prepared to reach their full potential. And this was a session from Dr. Flood, Dr. Flood. He spoke about how every local board member supports the process that through resources and the opportunity for all students to be successful. And the other one I attended was on recuperating an empty school, really. It was from Vance County Superintendent and Staff that they turned an old school into a center where all the students can go to various centers to get educational, educational knowledge that's not offered in their home school. And this, one of the main things that I got from this was the school district in Vance County is pretty close, all the schools are pretty close together, so students could get to the center within 10 minutes from any school. Of course, that wouldn't work in Granville County because we have schools that are 45 minutes apart, but it was interesting how they revitalized a school that was conducive to the community serving and serving the students. And I think anytime we can do things that involve the students and the community is worthy of the effort to do that. I, while I'm, I also attended a couple of committee meetings. I'm on the School Safety Committee that met, and I was impressed with all the SROs that came and talked about the services they try to render to our students and how important it is for them to be engaged in student success and in things to go on in the school. And I also visited with the, we have a facilitation equity committee that looks at the facilities throughout the district and tries to provide opportunities for students to have what they need to work with inside, inside the schools and through various activities. These are some interesting and learning experience for me, and I think as I move forward doing this, I will certainly be bringing reports that will be geared toward those types of things. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Does anyone else have something they need to report?
May I? It's not so much a report as a thank you or a shout out. Is that okay? Okay. So, going back to the EOC study session, I just want to give a special thanks to all the staff that showed up on a weekend. I mean, going above and beyond for our students to help bring up these proficiency scores that we have right now is amazing, and I know of at least one staff member who, out of her own pocket, bought all of her kids breakfast for showing up on a Saturday, and there may have been more, but I know of at least one. And so, thank you so much for doing that because it's so needed right now, and I really feel like it's going to make a difference. Also, thank you to our staff. Going back to the violence issue, you know, altercations, they happen, and unfortunately, I have seen some of these videos, and our staff throw themselves in between these kids, putting themselves in harm's way to protect these children, and it's just unbelievable. You know, only having one SRO, they're not always there right when this happens, and I just want to say thank you because they are absolutely going above and beyond to keep these kids safe, and it's amazing. It truly is. They're heroes. And a special shout out to the South Granville Vikings wrestling team tonight. My mama heart's breaking a little bit. I can't be there, but they're, they're an amazing team, and I know they're gonna, they're gonna do well, and to all the athletic teams that have games tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Anyone else? Okay, our next portion is the public comment section. Do we have anyone for public comment? Dr. Winborn?
No, Madam Chair, no one is on the.
We now come to item seven. Board members probably have had a chance to read through the items, the consent items, their approval of meeting minutes from June 6th, June 30th, August 1st, and field trip approval, and then a contract renewal for, trying to see what, I just paid my bill to these people today, so I should remember it. GFL Waste Management Contract Renewal. So, does anyone have any comments about it, or we want to go ahead and make a motion to accept these items as presented?
Do we, I'm sorry, may I ask a question? Are we accepting all of them at the same time?
Yeah, if we need to move one to something else, we can.
Just the, the field trips? So, we're, so that's a yes vote to all of them that are on the list? Is that correct?
Yes.
Motion to accept all consent items.
Second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes to accept the items. I don't think so.
Is Ms. LeBrec still with us?
She dropped off about 45 seconds ago.
Okay.
So, we're down to six. Thank you.
Our next item is academic updates.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Winborn, will you and your team take it away?
Thank you, Dr. McLean, and good evening, board members. It's good to see you tonight, and welcome, Ms. Hayes. Happy to bring you this month's academic updates. My team will be joining me for a couple of the slides, but basically, I'm going to share with you some of the short-term or more immediate things that are going on related to academics in our schools, and then talk about some of the midterm, sort of mid-range items that are coming up this spring and into the summer. Okay? So, next slide. Exams are upon us for first semester for our high school students, and as Ms. Hayes said, Dr. McLean referenced in her remarks, we've, we've been preparing. In fact, we had a wonderful session this past Saturday. Nearly 70 students turned out for our EOC, that's End of Course Bootcamp, and we had four very dedicated teachers. I'd like to thank Ms. Salisbury for organizing and facilitating it all. Principal Dr. Allen hosted the event, and she assisted as well. A special shout out to James Holmes, the custodian, who also helped us. It was just a great day, very productive, and I'm really proud of the way our students, you know, got up on a rainy Saturday morning and came out, you know, a bunch of sleepy-eyed teenagers when they got there, but by the end of the day, they, they were full of confidence and I think better prepared to take on these challenges of their state end-of-course exams. And I just wanted to take a minute, because I know we have some new board members, and it's just a good reminder for everyone that at the high school level, our students, there are four courses for which there is a mandated state assessment, and that is Math 1, Math 3, English 2, and Biology. And those tests are multiple choice. Some of them have constructed response sections on the test where a student will sort of partially create their answer in some form or fashion. And then, of course, on the English 2 EOC or End of Course Exam, there is an essay component as well. So, those are the big four. In addition to that, though, the state also requires a final assessment for all of our CTE courses, okay? And there are hundreds of those courses. There are seven general areas in which career and technical education falls, but we have, I think, currently offered upwards of 40 courses or so in our, in our district, and those students show their knowledge of the content area, their, how they've done it on the standards in one of three areas. They either take a CTE multiple choice test, it's just a 100-question multiple choice test, or they complete a credential for that course. And when I say credential, I'm talking about an official certification that's recognized beyond high school, okay? In many cases, these are transportable, and students can use them on their resume to get a job, and, you know, it's just a really nice portable certificate or way to show that they have that expertise. And then, in some courses, they do a performance-based measurement where they're actually demonstrating their knowledge and ability through either a portfolio or some sort of project, and usually they work on that throughout the entire course. It's not something that's done on that final day. So, those are the two main areas of state testing that we have that are upon us at the high school level. Next slide, please. Of course, we also have teacher-made exams, just regular old final exams that our teachers, they create and then administer to their students. A couple of notes about our final exams at the high school level. They count 20% of a student's total grade, okay? And that is part of board policy. You have set that threshold, and that's for all students except those students who have an IEP that are on our occupational course of study, okay? And that is different for them. In addition to getting a numerical score on their test, our state EOCs, our end-of-course exams, also give a proficiency level, okay? You recall, it's a level five is the highest, and that would be career and college-ready. Level four would be proficient, and then level three is, excuse me, level, level four is career and college-ready, and level three is just simply proficient. And then, below that, you're deemed not proficient. So, of course, Ms. Amy Rice, our testing coordinator, works to process all of those tests and make sure they're scored and uploaded to the state, and there's quite a level of security associated with all that. So, again, happy to take any questions as we're going along. I am trying to provide some background for some of our new board members, and just please interrupt me if there's anything you need to, you need me to expand upon. Next slide. So, the next thing I wanted to talk about is our choice and magnet programs. It's, it's almost that time of year, believe it or not. After the winter break, we're going to be starting to look forward to the following school year. It will be time for our high school students to start thinking about registration. That whole process sort of snowballs throughout the spring, and, you know, we like to put the options out for our families early on in the spring semester so that they can make decisions about what, where they would like for their students to be the following year. And, of course, the board has done a wonderful job of promoting choice in our school district, and we absolutely want to keep that choice program strong. We think options for our families are a very good thing. And I referenced Policy 4150 there, which speaks to school assignment, and, of course, it allows for these special programs or magnet programs placement, but also families can enroll in any school in which there is capacity, okay? That's stipulated in that policy. So, essentially, what we have is open enrollment throughout our school district, and at this time, we are not providing many transportation options for students that live outside of their attendance zone. Next slide. I would like to just remind and refresh the board about some of the really true magnet programs that we have in our, in our district. We, of course, we have choice at all of our schools, right? But some of our schools stand out because the program or the, the theme of the school is an integral part of the entire culture, thematic focus, and the academic practices. So, it's infused throughout every single class, every single course, the daily practices of the school, and it's, it's usually a very unique or innovative opportunity for our students. It's also a type of program that can be sustained. It's not dependent on a particular person, a particular teacher with a particular license area. This is something that's been built, it's kind of baked into the identity of the school. And it's also for the entire student population, okay? So, that's sort of where we would differentiate what we would consider a true magnet program. The next slide is sort of a bulleted list of where, where we see this happening in a, in a very strong way. Of course, Butlerston Elementary School is STEM, that's Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and our Project Lead the Way Launch Program. That is a special curriculum that's been adopted, and it's, it's a very exciting, hands-on, innovative curriculum, and the students participate in that throughout the school. Of course, at Stovall Shaw Elementary School, we have the Catch Program, which is associated with physical activity, healthful living, you know, integrating those aspects of, of well-being and health throughout the entire school. Of course, Wilton, we know has been recognized at the state level for its Leader in Me Program, being a lighthouse school. West Oxford Elementary School is making huge strides. Of course, they've been a global leader school and are now implementing the dual-language program there as well. Tar River Elementary School has a project-based learning focus that's been a part of the school for at least four or five years now. It's quite strong. And then, of course, the board, not too long ago, approved GC Holly Middle School to begin its journey with the International Baccalaureate Program, IB, and that, this year is the official planning year for that school, and it will launch next school year, okay? So, we, our staff has been going through training at Holly, so we've been investing in that process and getting ready for it to take off next school year. And then, of course, we have Granville Early College, which is nationally recognized for excellence there. Next slide. And as I said, you know, we have these choice programs at, at other schools as well, you know, we have options, and we have interesting programs and specific coursework, the coursework that's offered. Course Butlerston does a lot with STEM, and they have Project Lead the Way electives. And then, our, each of our traditional high schools have a, their own CTE focus areas. In addition to having, I believe it's seven CTE teachers at each high school, eight, eight at one, you know, each kind of focusing on a different program area, each of those three high schools offer courses that are not offered at the other. So, you can see JF Webb has Project Lead the Way Biomedical Sciences, and again, Project Lead the Way, it's a, it's a national curriculum that we purchase, and it is honors-level work. Granville Central High School has Project Lead the Way Engineering. Granville Central High School has Project Lead the Way Engineering, and South Granville High School has the Health Sciences pathway, which can lead to Certified Nursing Assistant Diploma for those students as well. So we have lots and lots of options. So we'll be promoting these as we start the new calendar year in January and be having a big choice fair that we invite parents to as well.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
So at the high school level, we have all these great programs. Let's say there's a student that goes to South Granville, and they realize, you know, after a year or two, they're more interested in the program being offered at Central. How easy or difficult is it for them to transfer?
Well, it depends on their individual situation, and generally speaking, as far as their pathway towards graduation, it's pretty straightforward. Typically, when our students transfer from a high school that's in their attendance zone, then they're going to be providing their own transportation to that other choice school. We have run shuttles in the past. We usually, you know, depend, Mr. Graham will work with Dr. Hamm on, you know, trying to figure out what's the threshold when we have enough students to run a bus. But to answer your question, the only thing that would be preventing them is making sure that they stay on that track to graduate within four years. There are athletic considerations, too, that need to be weighed, because the North Carolina High School Athletic Association has its own criteria with regard to eligibility. So, you know, that would need to be considered as well.
Which I believe we have the power to override, given certain circumstances.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Yeah, okay.
Within district, yes.
Right, thank you.
Dr. Winborn?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for a very great review of all the programs we offer in Granville County Schools here. I have a question about the teacher-made tests.
Yes.
Would the principal oversee that? There's some type of guidelines, that number of questions, things like that, that teacher must prepare as the teacher-made test, and what percentage of that will count towards the final grade?
So all final exams count 20% of a student's final grade, so even the teacher-made tests will count the same weight. You know, many teachers work together, especially within their own department, to develop those tests, and I believe that the principal does have a role in reviewing them as well.
Good, thank you.
All right. What is the schedule for the exams? I don't have it in front of me. Is it in January?
So the exams will be happening starting next week, Ms. Rice.
Week after next.
Week after next, that's right.
Okay, week after, so we'll go in before Christmas?
Yes.
Great.
Our high school is always the last, the state requirement, the last five days.
Next week, next week.
Next week, next week. I made more time. So yeah, it's the last five days of the semester, a semester course, and for year-long courses, it's the last 10 days of the year.
Right, it's good to get them behind them before they go home for break.
Five or 10.
Yeah, but it's upon us. It's really, it's here. And, you know, it is before the winter break, by design. That was based on the feedback that we get from our calendar committee that Mr. Graham works with, all of our stakeholders. All right, next slide. And this time, I'd like to call Dr. Whitaker up to just speak briefly about our transformation efforts. Of course, she's been involved, you know, heavily with the project, A Portrait of a Graduate. She's spoken to the board many times about this. I'm not sure if there are any questions at this time. We have been very proud of our work in this area and that it's aligned super closely with what the state has done. But Dr. Whitaker, if you'd like to maybe just speak to a few words about, yeah, Portrait of a Graduate.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we've been talking about A Portrait of a Graduate since we started the work last year, and as you all know, we did approve our Portrait of a Graduate back in the spring, right before the state approved their Portrait of a Graduate. And again, we were excited because the competencies that our stakeholders came up with in Granville County aligned perfectly with the competencies that the state developed. So where we are now, all of our students and teachers and schools, they've been given copies of our Portrait of a Graduate each month in our elementary, middle, and high schools. We take one competency a month, and we focus on that, and we do activities that center around that particular competency. And we're also building career and college activities throughout K-12, such as career days, college days, and so forth, so that it's not foreign to students in elementary and middle school. Next semester, we're planning down at the elementary and middle level to have a big career day that's going to align with some of the work over activities that will be taking place in high school with our seniors.
Okay.
Dr. Whitaker, I have one question.
Yes.
Could you agree, ma'am, with the competencies coming out there in the portrait?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Give me one second. So here are our competencies that we came up with, and when I talk about competencies, these are the traits or the skills that we're saying, when our students graduate from Granville County Schools, these skills or traits will be embedded, okay? So adaptability, adaptable and flexible, able to adjust to new conditions, collaborator, getting along well with others, and knowing how to be a team player, a communicator, a person who can articulate thoughts through oral and written communication, a critical and logical thinker, students who, or graduates who can analyze and evaluate issues to form judgments, empathetic. And this was one of the top ones that the stakeholders came up with. They thought that it was going to be important for students to know how to get along well with others and to show compassion and to be accepting. Lifelong learners, love of learning and willingness to try new things, and responsible, graduates who show accountability and who are responsible decision-makers. And we can, I can get you copies of this. Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to also note that we had folks from business and industry help participate in that process, too. So it's, you know, really looking beyond our students' time with us and how we need to prepare them for the workforce, you know, of tomorrow. So, and that speaks to some of these other bullets that are here. Of course, we're always looking for new innovative practices, this next generation of skills that are needed for our students. You heard Dr. McLean reference coding, which is a big push this week, in fact. So we're going to have a lot of activities related to that. I know Ernie Connor and his team are working closely with our teachers out in the field to provide exciting ways to introduce students to this world of computer programming and computer science. We offer it formally in courses at our high schools and introductions in some of our middle schools, but this is really meant to, you know, get that, spark that interest in this whole area. Of course, Dr. McLean's been involved with leadership development, and we've also worked to develop an alternate school accountability model, although we are hearing that we're on the verge of getting an overhaul at the state level. So stay tuned on that. We might see something this, as early as this spring, that could go into effect, sort of in a pilot version, the next school year alongside the current model that we have. So we'll see some big changes in that in the near future. Next slide. Looking ahead, and I'm going to ask Dr. Whitaker to help me with this again, too, it's not too early for us to start planning for summer 2023. You know, this last summer was really busy for us. We served, you know, I think it was over 1,700 youngsters in a variety of programs. Probably won't be as big this coming year. We are, you know, nearing the end of our COVID funds, and we have to be very careful how we stretch those dollars. So we're going to be targeting specific areas for our students. So, Dr. Whitaker, do you want to run through some of these real quick?
Thank you. Yeah, so we've already begun planning for our summer programs, and for summer 2023, we're going to offer our literacy program. That's going to be our RTA camp for kindergarten through third grade. Our bridge program, that's the transition camp for students who are going to enter kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade. We're going to provide, again, workforce development programs, credit recovery for students in grades nine through 12 who would like to recover credit in any core content area, and credit acceleration, and this is for students who are in grades eight through 11 who would like to take a course for acceleration.
Next slide. Two other just general updates I wanted to provide the board. These, of course, are information-only. The first is we have submitted our virtual school application, and that is for Granville Academy. North Carolina Department of Public Instruction requires, per statute, a annual application, and so we have successfully submitted that. We had a nice group here at this school, Granville Academy, that worked very hard to put that together, so I'd like to thank Principal Wharton and her staff that helped put this together. Also, we have just completed our annual survey on cursive and multiplication, and that is complete as well, and I'm happy to report that we are in full compliance there. But happy to take any questions anybody has about either of those two topics.
Tell me more about the second one, cursive and multiplication.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Whitaker, because this falls in her areas, particularly with elementary education. So, Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, so we are required by state to make sure that students are taught cursive writing and multiplication tables in elementary school. And so, as Dr. Winborn said, we submitted our survey last week showing that we are in compliance, and in our elementary schools, and we're required to show whether or not it's being taught in grades three, five. So in all of our elementary schools, in grades three, five, students are receiving cursive writing instruction through direct class instruction. They're getting in-class practice. They're getting in-class exposure to sample materials that demonstrate cursive writing. They get homework practice, and in our schools, they are allotting, some schools are allotting weekly instruction, and some schools are doing it maybe twice a week, every other week. But at any rate, they are, our students are being exposed to, and they are receiving the cursive writing instruction, and the state doesn't give us any specific guidelines as to you have to teach it X amount of days or X amount of hours. We just have to make sure that we're providing that instruction. As far as multiplication tables, the same thing. All of our students in grades three, five are required to memorize their multiplication tables. They are receiving direct class instruction with that. They're receiving in-class practice, also exposure to tools supporting the memorization of multiplication facts, homework practice, and multiplication facts or tools are being taught daily at all of our elementary schools. And so we are excited about that, that we are in compliance with the law.
How long has that been a requirement?
I'm not really sure how long.
Because it wasn't always, correct?
It was not, it was not. It's been since I've been in this position, maybe three or four years.
Which one, the cursive or the?
The cursive, not the multiplication.
2017, yeah.
Okay.
So I can tell you factually that that was not being done during COVID. Are there any plans to catch kids up who missed it? Because if you can't write in cursive, you can't read cursive, and if you can't read cursive, you can't read historical documents like the Constitution.
Well, as far as catching students up, if they are, if schools are now providing instruction in cursive grades three through five, some of those students should be caught in that, but as far as our middle school students, maybe, who did not get that during COVID, we could definitely work with principals in schools to see what we can do during intervention blocks to try to provide some of that support for those students so that they could get caught up in that.
I think that would be an excellent initiative, because kids who missed out in third grade definitely
Yes.
can't write their names in cursive.
All right, thank you.
That would be awesome.
All right, we will follow up on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you're welcome.
So that's the final slide. Happy to take any additional questions you may have.
I just want to say that I'm really impressed with the academic team here, with a very wide range of resources, choices, and simply pull our thought into making sure that our kids will leave Granville County Schools career and college-ready here. And I'm just happy that you are here, and I feel very proud of Granville County Public Schools.
Thank you.
We have an amazing team, for sure.
We do, we do.
Dr. Winborn, ask them to come out.
Yes.
Good job. Thank you all so very much.
Well done.
Impressive group, hard-working group.
All right. Okay, our next item falls under the Athletic Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Athletic update.
Thank you so very much. This is a presentation, an update for all of our athletics across Granville County public schools, and our district athletic director, Coach Mike Carroll, is going to be bringing this information tonight. Thank you for being here, Coach.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Dr. McLean. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with two updates. The first update is about two appeal processes that our, two of our local high schools just went through here recently, and the second is the drawing concern as it pertains to the numbers of participations in athletics throughout our schools. If you look at the slides right now, and I'm sure you guys have already viewed these, but I start every meeting and huddle session with my athletic directors and coaches with this mission statement for athletics, and it's to simply provide an equal and safe opportunity for all students to participate in competitive sports while fostering academics, sportsmanship, teamwork, and individual improvement. Now, if you recall back to the beginning of the meeting tonight when we had student recognition, we were able to highlight a lot of the areas in this mission statement, which is what we're here for, right? We were able to highlight sportsmanship with the recognition of a Sportsmanship of the Year Award. We were able to recognize teamwork with the South Granville Football Team winning a conference championship and the J.F. Webb Volleyball Team winning the two-way conference championship, and individual improvement with multiple players receiving Player of the Year recognitions throughout the conference, regional, and state level. So part of our mission statement is exceeding right now in athletics. However, there's one part at the very beginning that I'm concerned about, and that's safe opportunities. As we go through these slides, I want you to really look at the numbers and look at that part of the presentation and get an explanation of why it may not be safe for our student athletes right now. First, I want to explain how the High School Association works, and if you're unfamiliar with that, I encourage each board member in here to take time to either have a conversation and roundtable talk with myself or someone in the county that has an idea about athletics, or simply get on the high school website page and read through the handbook. There's a lot of valuable information that we can have moving forward as we make decisions as it pertains to athletics in this county. So the High School Association has four classifications, one through four. Obviously, one being your lower number of schools, where there's two, three, maybe 400 student athletes or students, eligible students as ADMs are reported. Four A classification obviously being the highest, okay? Next slide, please. If you look at these numbers, this is our current conference with all Granville County high schools. We're in the Northern Lakes Athletic Conference. It is a 3A, 2A split conference, meaning half of the schools are 3A and another portion of the schools are 2A. If you look at those numbers, you can see my immediate concern. If you simply look at our three high schools and compare them to Southern Durham High School, it's a minimum of 1,000 more students at that school, and we're competing against them athletically. Now, you may ask yourself, how does the classifications work and how do the conferences work? Well, the High School Association, and when I say that, North Carolina High School Athletic Association, I cut it down to High School Association, they comprise these conferences every four years. They comprise these conferences every four years. And just recently in 2020, they had another realignment, and this is where we're at right now. So every four years, they will have a realignment meeting. So in two more years, we will be placed in another conference. But I think, uh, you know, we're taking some actions right now to hopefully stand strong where we're not put in another two A, three A conference, because that's what we're in right now. So I want to explain to you, because I'm sure somebody in here is asking, well, why is the High School Association doing this? Well, I'm going to simply read Q Tucker, her, uh, statement in 2020 when they did the last conference realignment. And her statement was, "A total of thirty-three of sixty-one new conferences or split conferences, which appear designed to keep teams closer to home in conference play." The number of split conferences in the alignment draft represents the realignment committee's desire to limit those travel. So it's about a travel. They want to keep us close to home. I guess that that overrides safety, right? I'm just guessing. Next slide, please. So I wanted to just jot down a few numbers for you as it pertains to, uh, we'll call it a violent sport because you're running around the field hitting each other. I mean, even though we're protected, it it's it's what it is. So some of the participation when it comes to football in our current conference, the top two you see are from three A schools, Southern Durham, they have eighty-three players with jerseys. Vance County, next door neighbors, have forty-five. You get to JFWEB, they have thirty-two, no, no JV program. Majority of the players this year were freshmen and sophomores. There were ten seniors and five juniors on that team. Granville Central, there were twenty-seven member, uh, players with jerseys. Again, no JV, uh, program. Nine freshmen and eight sophomores head to play for them this year. And down to South Granville, forty-nine with jerseys numbers. Next slide, please. So it's just, you know, some of the issues I see, uh, moving forward and some that we're we're facing right now is that our Granville County Public School, high schools, we're in jeopardy of having zero junior varsity programs. If you see, JFWEB and Granville Central had to cancel, uh, girls soccer, boys soccer, and football because of injuries and numbers this year. And football alone, the county had to cancel four football games due to insufficient players due to injuries and not having enough players to put on the field safely to compete. The problem with this trend is that we're not developing, uh, competitive varsity programs. We're asking our student athletes to come out of middle school, was eighth graders rise to the ninth grade and compete against seventeen-year-olds. It's not safe. If you look at the Granville County High School numbers I have at the bottom, we have fifty-six athletic programs in our county, just at the high school level. Forty-nine of varsity programs and only seven represent a JV squad. Seven of fifty-six JV. So forty-nine of our programs are competing with freshmen and sophomore on the field against seniors who have been developed in a JV program, been developed in a weight room and ready to compete as a skill set and physical. At this time, I would take any questions you may have.
Yeah, Coach, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Are these numbers coming, or I guess, do you see some of the challenges being lack of participation interest-wise? Lack of resources, lack of facilities to hold more of these teams? What do you think the biggest challenges are right now?
I think all of the above. Uh, when you say facilities, it's interesting you said that. I was just recently in a class that did a survey. Ninety percent of people's first visit on a high school campus is due to athletics. So that's something to keep in mind when it's time to upgrade our facilities as well, to answer that part. Participation, yes, that there, there is a, a lack of that. It could be due to socioeconomic status of of the homes. A lot of our kids are having to work to provide for their families. But even so, there should still be enough at each school to participate in athletics. My concern is the numbers we have are the facts that we look at, not the possibilities. Yes, sir.
What about, uh, kids who doesn't meet the grade GPA to participate?
They're ineligible to play.
Right.
But but often, our coaching staff develops a program that mentors them and allows them to tag along in a managerial status, uh, to give them something to be vested in and hopefully get them academically eligible for the next season.
So the dates come along, they hanging there, the four years, four years at Webb or that?
Some do, some don't, ma'am. That, that's a number I can't, I would have to do a lot of research to give you that factual number.
Coach Ballpark, how does this compare to the last couple of years? Is it trending like ten percent down each year? Is it comparable? Is this a drastic drop compared to five years ago? How does this compare?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm new to the position. I, I took over this summer. But I can tell you as a twenty-year veteran in this county, it's been a trend that's been going down. As a coach in the county, uh, it's been six years since I've had a, a JV program in, in my, at Webb for baseball. So it's been a trend that it's going down. And and I'm, if I'm being honest in front of everybody, we've got a lot of high schools in this county and neighboring counties when it comes to charter schools and public schools. We have to make decisions. There's, there's not going to be enough athletes to continue to competitively and safely support all of the, that, fifty-six programs.
So what are you saying, to limit some programs or the choice, you say we got to make a choice, what are the choices?
Yes, ma'am. My, my initial statement, as, as athletic director and as it drives athletics and the safety of our kids, we got to close the high school. We got to close the high school and redistrict the lines where we're putting more numbers in schools and make us competitive at the two A level, which is where we're at now.
From a facility perspective, which school makes the most sense for that to happen?
Well, the
Facilities only.
Facilities only, I would say Granville Central High School, because they still lack a lot of facilities.
Thank you.
You saying close Granville Central?
Yes, ma'am, that would be my suggestion. And I know that's not popular, but I'm not here for popularity contest.
Do you feel like there's more interest in participation in certain sports in different air, in different areas of the county?
No, ma'am, I don't.
I'm, I'm just referencing because, um, I know that South Granville had twenty-seven soccer players this year. Um, and we couldn't hardly put jerseys on all of them, whereas, uh, JFWEB, I think, maybe had ten
Correct.
at the beginning of the season.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I think
But there's only barely over a hundred student difference in school, in school attendance.
Well, I think fetal bro, programs has a lot to do with that. Uh, if you note that in, if you do your research in, in Oxford, the, um, recreation department is not as good as it used to be. They don't offer as many programs, and that could be due to participation as well. Whereas the Southern End of the County with S G A A and other venues, they, they offer more. So that does entice the participation, but that still doesn't give us the answer to the safe part of it.
But if you're basing it just off of, um, school attendance numbers, I mean Vance County has almost thirteen, has thirteen hundred students by the number that you provided, and their soccer team was less than fifteen kids.
Right.
That, that doesn't add up to what you just said, though.
I'm, I'm basing all my facts off what we, we have in Granville County, not Vance.
I know, but you compared us to surrounding schools that are in our, that are in our conference.
Yes, ma'am.
That are in our conference.
Let me rephrase, yes. Let me clear that, because I did say that. And what I mean by surrounding areas is charter schools specifically. Because if you look at Vance Charter, if we're going to call the elephant out in the room, they have a lot of kids from Granville County at that school. And a lot of the club sports, when it comes to baseball, softball, volleyball, soccer, that's where those students are at.
Do you feel like the lack of participation or interest could in any way be a reflection of lack of support of athletics?
No, because I, I think we're, we're well supported in the community. I think our administration supports athletics, so no, I don't think that has anything to do with participation.
Coach Carroll?
Yes.
Just looking at the state, we're located next to very large counties. Is this a problem for other districts, other, others than Vance, across the, say, a smaller county that's next to Forsyth or something like that? Are you seeing it across the state as a problem?
Madam Chair, I could not honestly answer that question for you because I have not researched that. If you would like me to do that, I would certainly jump on that.
I wouldn't want you to take too much time, but it would just seem that our location too plays into that. Do you see any movement towards changing that in two years by the High School Athletic Association?
Yes, I, I strongly feel like in two years, they'll go back to what original conferences used to be, and that's straight two A or straight three A, not having split conferences. At least I hope they do. If not, Granville County will represent at the, uh, board meeting when they discuss realignment.
Well, I know in the, uh, School Board Association, uh, conference, um, one of the platforms was to, uh, put the, uh, charter schools not be able to play in the one A because of being able to go across district lines and being recruited. It puts small schools at an unfair advantage. So I'm just wondering how that might play out.
Alright, I'm not sure. That's up to the association at this point.
Would you say that the success of an athletic program would, would also weigh in? I mean, even though overall attendance numbers have gone down, I've seen programs grow despite that. So I'm just, I'm trying to see the, I'm trying to see the logic.
Right, well, everybody likes to win, so
Right, and the more you win, the more participation you get, because then everybody wants to
Correct. We could keep rolling the snowball, and I could bring more of my opinion to the table if you, if you're willing to listen to that. The school of choice has a lot to do with that. In my personal opinion, as Mike Carroll, as a father of kids in Granville County, I feel like every school should be the same. Everybody should get the same education. We shouldn't offer other things at other schools. So that, that does give options for kids to go to different areas to, to play sports, to stack teams. If I want to, if I can use that term, because it happens. I mean, there's, there's rules that prevent it, but there's also, you know, guidelines that that allows them to do that. It's just my two cents on school of choice. We're giving our kids an opportunity to go where they want to go. JFWEB should provide the same education as South Granville. Stovall Shaw should provide the same education as CG Cradle. That's, that's, that eliminates that part. I mean, there's so many steps to athletics that, that's why I encourage each of you to dig in and, and, and put your boots on and strap up and get in there and see what's going on. Yes, ma'am.
Parent involvement, parent support, interest in athletics, does it vary from school to school?
Absolutely.
I remember just a few short years ago, I would say probably about four, five, I joined the Webb Booster Club. Now, I know the football team had their own little club, but we were lucky to get seven or eight people there. Most of them were women. And it, it was just a little frustrating to me because I hadn't expected it to be extremely large.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I was really kind of disappointed that there wasn't that much interest in the sports from the parents.
Well, I, I don't think that's only included in sports. I, I think, I mean, look at your teacher conferences, let's be honest. You know, that kind of goes hand in hand. I'd be willing to bet if you look at your, your elementary and, and middle school levels and, and track it up within that district to the high school level, it goes hand in hand with athletics, your participation.
As a former sprinter at Webb High School, and I cheered as well, we reran at Webb on a dirt track. And when we left there, we got asked off track some years, but I learned now that track design compliance is going to trap me. Is that correct?
As of, uh, two weeks ago, you were correct, but tonight you're wrong. Where it was, it's been repaired.
Wonderful.
Yes, ma'am. They will be able to host meets this year.
I have a question, and you know, I, you can just answer it based on what you feel as far as, you know, I, I was looking quite a bit at what you were talking about with the junior varsity program. If you had the ability to fix that, or what would you see as the way to get that fixed because of the, you know, lack of the junior varsity numbers?
As far as what now?
The junior varsity, you know, I know that you said that, that it, it says that they're in jeopardy. How would that get fixed if there was a way to?
Well, that's a million-dollar question. If I had to answer to that, ma'am, I probably wouldn't be sitting here giving this update to you tonight. Um, I would have come right in in June and, and taken care of that as we entered the fall season. But I think a lot of it is, you know, building relationships. You know, we, we have a pretty consistent, uh, unfortunately, coaching turnover due to our, you know, salaries.
Right.
So we, you know, we got to get a little more competitive on that to keep consistent coaches that allows these kids to, to trust them and want to come out and be a participant in that sport. And that helps with JV as well.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's not the fix-all. Um, I, I'd be a fool if I stood up here and told you that, um, but we can make strides. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. I have a question. I've been sort of sitting here listening to what you said and the responses and, you know, I go back to why we are here. And it has to do with academics first, and then those other things, extracurricular activities, which athletics is. And, and my question has to do with something you said about, I guess your theory was putting more kids in the high school makes it a better, better athletic program. And I was under the impression that getting kids to participate made it a, made it a better program.
Right.
Because having a lot of kids doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to play sports.
I understand what you're, what you're saying and what you're asking, but I'm a believer in strength in numbers as well. It's, it's proven, if you look at four A classification, three A classification, two A and one A, the bigger number of schools are going to win more. They're going to compete more, they're going to have more participation. I don't have the answer of the why on that. I can just tell you that two A schools predominantly are going to beat one A schools. Three A schools are going to beat two A schools, and that's a numbers game. That's ADMs that are reported. The higher, the more the kids you have, the better your program's going to be.
Well, when, when Webb had a basketball player that went on to play for Carolina, school wasn't any bigger.
Yes, sir, it was. It was tremendously bigger. Yes, sir, I'm a disagree with you there. It was close to nine hundred kids there then.
Why?
Sir, Granville Central was just built, okay? All your charter schools were still in early stages of, of building.
Yeah, I understand where you're going, but my point is, you're missing my point, I think, but my point is, if you get schools with good athletes, whether they're large or small, they're, they're to draw more people to not necessarily be students, but pre-people will come and, and they'll be more productive in, in the sight of everybody, especially the community.
Okay. I understand what you, what you're saying, but you also said that Webb wasn't big when we won, when they won the state championship with Isaiah Hicks. That's not true, we have four hundred more kids there.
Okay, my mistake, I'm sorry.
It sounds like it's a multifaceted problem.
I mean, it's, like I said, we could stand here all night and talk about it, but until everybody does their own research and see the numbers that I'm seeing and the trends that I'm seeing.
So you do think that it would be good for school boards to support splitting these conferences? Because I can't imagine that it's good for Vance County anymore than it is for us.
Yes, ma'am, with, without a doubt, one hundred percent, if nothing else changes, we have to support going back to a simple two A conference. We can't compete with Southern Durham with seventeen hundred kids. It's not safe. I encourage you to go to athletic events and, and see the numbers and see the, the difference what a, what a bigger high school has. What a, what the difference a JV program by allowing that kid to get in the weight room instead of getting out there, having to learn and play against varsity-level sports. You know, it, it makes a difference physically.
Coach Carroll? You remember when Mary Potter didn't have a baseball team and the students there went to Northern Granville and played on their team?
Not sure if I quite remember that, I may have been in college when that happened.
No, I remember it because, uh, my grandson was in, uh, June, was in, played on it before he went to Webb. He attended Mary Potter but played on the Northern Granville team. Are there any ways, especially for like the JV programs, to have that kind of situation? I know there's a distance thing, but it is a voluntary thing to do any kind of things to get more kids interested.
I mean, you have to add the participation of, of kids. I mean, you have to add the participation of kids. I'd have to go back and look at the number, but 27 kids at Grahamville Central and Webb roughly played this year. It's not near enough to have a JV team. And I know both schools, I visit both schools regularly in concerns of safety and wondering if we were going to have to cancel games from week to week to week. And the coaches were doing, in my opinion, everything they could with talking to the kids and trying to build those relationships. It's just a numbers issue right now, participation.
Are all of the surrounding charter schools pretty much in the 1A right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much, Coach Carroll.
Thank you.
You are passionate about your job, and that's what we like about you.
Well, ma'am, while I'm here, like I said, I'm not a typical popularity contest. I just wanted to inform. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
So, we're going to change the gear now to the technology update.
We are. We're excited about this presentation as well. Mr. Ernie Connor and his team have been working in the area of technology, and we have some updates. Mr. Connor?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to very briefly give you updates on some of the projects that we've been working on that I mentioned earlier in the summer. We've been working on those behind the scenes, and I wanted to very briefly give you an update on where we are. Next slide, please. So, with our RUS grant, the Rural Utility Service Grant, we are in year three. This will be the final year of this project. As a matter of fact, I met with the vendor today, and we did a walkthrough of all the elementary schools and GC Holly Middle School. And this grant allows us to place video conference and equipment, not only in the classroom, but also in larger areas so that you can actually do video conferences between schools. You can do virtual field trips. There are very nice Polycon cameras and interactive panels that not only can you use for instruction, you can also use for conferences. So, we're in the last phase of this grant. We should have delivery and installation in the spring of this year, and that we will have covered all of our schools. Next slide. Also, wanted to give you a quick update on our network, and I've been talking about this for several weeks. And I want to give a shout out to the technology team, Derek Long, our network administrator, our technicians in each of our schools. We have upgraded the final four core switches, Cradle, Tar River, West Oxford, and the central office. On December 15th, we will finally have 10 gig internet service in every school and building in our district. And that should be sufficient to be able to provide the curriculum and be able to utilize our internet video-driven resources, and we should be good to go for several years. I also want to give a huge shout out to the technicians in each school and Derek Long, our administrator, our network administrator. We worked with a company, a vendor, and we replaced 326 wireless access points, which are the devices that allow us to have wireless network in the buildings that you see on the slides. That means that even though the vendor came in and installed it, Derek Long had to touch every device, the port, to be able to configure it, and each one of the school technicians, the technical support specialist, provided support to make sure that they were in place and to work with the vendors. So, I want to give a huge shout out to my team for all that they did for that. So, the only school that's left that we will upgrade will be Holly. Now, that's the last one that we need to do to replace and finish up all of our wireless access points to be the latest upgrades. I also wanted to just very briefly mention two programs that we've put in place. We've been working with a single sign-on platform. It's called ClassLink. Basically, what this does, this allows our students to sign on using their username and password, and then their resources will appear on their dashboard so that they can access their resources in one portal. The other program that I wanted to mention is Land School Air. Land School Air is a teacher program that allows them to monitor their students at one, from one location on their computer. And from the picture there, you can see an example that a teacher's screen would look something like this, that they can see what their students are doing. We're going to continue to provide training to be able to help our teachers not only be able to monitor their students, but to be able to restrict websites and that type of thing. There's a lot that tool can do that it's our job, now that we've implemented Land School Air, to be able to train our teachers to be able to sufficiently use it and to be able to monitor our students. And the final thing that I mentioned back in the summer that we had applied for, round three for the ECF grant, and we did receive official approval that we will be getting the touchscreen computers for our K-2 students so that they will be able to use those at home and at school. So, they will be the touchscreen devices. Any questions?
Thank you for all the work you've done to get us these grants.
I'm just very thankful for my team and all the support that we have within the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, Mr. Connor should probably stay right there for the next item, if that's all right.
The next item is our student technology internship program.
So, I can tell you, I am tremendously excited about this. We've been working on this for quite some time. We are going to be, my team and I are going to be working with a group of students as interns or employees of our team to be able to provide additional support to our district. Through a partnership with the North Carolina Business Center for Education, Dale Technologies has worked with us, we are going to be able to offer up to five students to work 10 hours a week at $15 an hour as members of our team. So, we're actually going to have more than just your typical, what we used, what people call break fix, which would be device repair. Yes, we will have a group of students that will do that. Maybe one or two interns will do that. But we're going to also have interns that will help and provide instructional videos to teach teachers how to use some of the technology in their classroom. They'll be working with our instructional technology facilitators. We're going to also have hopefully an intern or two that will be interested in video production. We may have an intern that will actually be helping these guys stream our school board meetings and do some of our videos in our video production studio. We're hoping to maybe have an intern that would work with us with cybersecurity. We have a program called Know Before, which is an educational program to teach users the difference in a legitimate email and efficient email. And this program allows us to actually send out, you know, as an education, you know, not as a gotcha, but just to teach our users, our teachers, our students, the difference in a legitimate email and one that may be trying to get your personal information. The bottom line is, the students are going to help us do that. We opened up our applications about three weeks ago. We have 15 applications that we will be interviewing for these five positions. Next slide. But I did want to say this, and I appreciate the instructional team. I know most of them are gone, but I do want to have a shout out to them that we wanted to be able to interview our students based on our team and our district's core values, which match with the graduate profile. So, we are not looking to hire our interns on whether or not they can do technical skills. We will teach that. Our team will teach that. We want them to be able to have the core values that you see on the screen. Attendance, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, learner's mindset. So, we're going to look for students that meet these qualifications, and then we will teach the technical skills to be able to really make them a very valuable member of our team. But I'm excited that we have 15 juniors and seniors in our district that are interested in this program.
How long will they be on, those who are selected? How long is their internship?
So, the North Carolina Business Center for Education, they provided us with $25,000 to pay the students. So, we applied for that. We received that commitment from them. So, we will have $25,000 that we can use to pay our students to work for us.
So, how long, versus a school year?
About 30 weeks.
30 weeks, okay.
So, they could go on into the summer.
Is this something that they do during the school day?
If students have breaks in their schedule, if they get out early, then yes. We intend to offer flexible scheduling. So, when the students apply for their position, I sent out a survey, and I asked those questions. When would you be available to work? You know, do you have a free period? And we'll take a look at that, and a member of my staff will be working with those students to help them with that flexible scheduling. So, yes, ma'am.
Did they receive any kind of credit?
We've talked about receiving something, credit, have credit. We've talked about something.
I mean, it's a job skill.
It is a job.
Like, much like our CTE programs, it sounds like.
Now, the CTE internship program, the students in the CTE internship program can apply for a position with us, just as they do any other, any other job. So, they could receive CTE internship credit.
I just have to say, this is exciting. I don't know if you've quite grasped everything Mr. Connor is saying, but this is a big deal. This is a really big opportunity for our pupils, and we're excited to be able to bring this to the county and to the community. This is huge.
Any other questions?
Well, what you just mentioned with regards to this program, these students will have background, you know, as far as when they go out to apply. They already have some experience. That is very critical, yes.
We're looking forward to providing that training, but we're looking forward to them being able to help further support, you know, the team that work on my team and also the schools and the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. We really thank you. We appreciate you.
Madam Chair, could I add something? I'm really proud of Mr. Connor. I'm privileged to have him as part of my operations team. And I just wanted to share with you all that this, the genesis of this came from, Mr. Connor asked if he could visit a school while he was attending some training in Texas. And he took it upon himself to go, you know, rent a car to go visit a school that was about an hour or two away. I can't remember. But he was very, very invested in this prior to the trip, floated it. We talked about it at length. He kept me updated, you know, at the time, and then when he came back, he was so excited about this initiative. And I just wanted to share with you, ladies and gentlemen, that I'm really proud of my team, and Mr. Connor represents that kind of initiative. I'm also pleased that our district encourages its folks to do this professional development and to take these kinds of initiatives, these trips, you know, that lead to these ideas. So, I just want to say thanks and how proud I am of Mr. Connor.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Graham. We're all about innovation, whatever we can do to help our youngsters survive, not in the world we know, but in the world in which they must live in. And that's a world we've not quite been in yet. So, thank you once again, Mr. Connor. Phil, thank you for that.
Our next item is the GCPS Policy Committee. You will see that we have recommended action to approve as presented. These are changes to existing policies that were discussed during the meeting on November the 7th, and this is a first read. And if you read through them and have any questions, any discussion, or you want to think about them to the next time, that's fine, too. Do you have anything to add?
No, I'll just say this is first reading, so the board can make, can accept them as they are tonight, can make changes tonight. But if they are approved tonight, there will be a second reading and a second vote at the next meeting.
So, I have a couple of things I'd like to say about this one. So, first off, I think it's appropriate for us to table this for a couple of reasons. One being Ms. LeBrecque is not here. I think it's important, if we're talking about policy for all people that it affects, to be present. Additionally, it allows Danielle to read them as she was newly elected and sworn in tonight. Gives her time for all that to be digested. I know she did her diligence and looked at a number of these things, but after sitting through the meeting, it allows for, I guess, a different viewpoint as looking on this for another month or so. To add to that, it was mentioned earlier by Ava that there is another policy that's going to be slated for discussion next month already. I can't remember the number.
There's about, there's maybe 12 more. Maybe 12 more, yeah.
For my perspective, I would prefer to digest all of this at once instead of having two halves of the policy discussion. Another thing that I think is important is the, and I don't know, I hope this was an oversight, but the 2116 removal from office policy is the only one that wasn't here for review. So, if that can be put on there so that we can read that ahead of time before looking at that and voting on it and giving our thoughts. And that's what I think about everything.
Was that something we just didn't change, or?
Let me look at the provisions. It's on the chart as revised, so I need to, I think.
So, I guess to summarize, my opinion is that we table the policy for everything to be discussed next month, all of the policies.
Are you saying 2116 was not on your list?
No, well, so it's on the summary up top about the ones that were revised, but there isn't a document below for review to see what the revision was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion that we table it until the next meeting?
Yeah, so I'll move to table the discussion for policy till next month.
Motion's been made to table the policy on the presented policies till the next meeting. Do we have, you've made a motion?
Yeah, a motion to second it.
Second it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We certainly want everybody to feel like they have understood what they're reading, if they have questions. So, I appreciate that.
For me, since I don't know who's all in the policy committee, so I can direct questions if necessary.
The policy committee, Dr. McKnight was on it.
He was on it.
I'm on it. Hes is on it. I'd have to look at the list, but what will happen? You'll get an email probably in the next day or two, and the policy, the committees will be listed, and the two that you have the most interest in just kind of shoot it back to me.
Thank you.
Can't guarantee everybody gets on what they want, but you like to make sure somebody gets something that they like. But the policy committee will be one that meets an awful lot because it's a lot of policies to go through. It takes time. And sometimes we try to do it before a board meeting rather than having to reschedule another date for people. But probably once we get through the policy manual totally, the policy committee will probably not meet that often, except when things change at the state level or the federal level or an issue comes up that we feel like we need to change. So, I don't anticipate it would be that frequent.
So, right, we're in the middle of an update of the entire manual because some of it was outdated. And so, the School Board Association gives us sample policies, and then the committee goes through and says, we like what they wrote, or we want what we had, or some mix. goes through and says, we like what they wrote, or we want what we had, or some mix.
And some we keep like they have them and some we, we change because they don't fit our situation.
And for general curiosity, uh, with this list and the list that was slated for next month, is that the entirety of the policy or is there a lot more than that?
That's just chapter two. We've already been through one and this is chapter two and there...
We're reviewing the entire manual.
There are nine chapters.
Wonderful, thank you.
You may not want to put your name down for that.
So we, we tried not to bring you all at the same time, but in this instance, in January, it sounds like we will bring forth twenty some.
Happy New Year.
Sounds good. Ooh, the next item, eight oh six, redistricting consolidation conversation. I think we talked about what we wanted to do was just everybody kind of give a brief thing, what we'd be doing. And Mr. Graham is going to, before we get into that part of it later, he's going to be giving us, uh, some updates on some questions that were asked about busing issues. Is that what you're going to be covering in that?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly correct.
Right.
So as you all begin to deliberate, uh, each of you received a handout looks like this. Thanks to Dr. Hamm to put this together, uh, from transportation. Last board meeting, it was asked about the length of the, of the long bus routes. Our longest bus routes are right at two hours. Holly is one hour fifty-four minutes, West Oxford, one hour fifty-five minutes, Stovall-Shaw, one hour fifty-three minutes, Northern Granville, Middle and Webb is one hour and fifty-five. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm just sharing this and this, and Dr. Hamm, thank you for putting this together because there's other information that might be useful to you as well as you, uh, start to think about this topic.
That's one way. Was that round trip?
No, that's the total.
Total.
That's the total route.
Total time the child would be on the bus.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Dr. Hamm, please come.
I just want to point out there at the bottom of the sheet, that's the time from the, the bus is cranked until it gets back to the school. So a lot of our, on all of our bus routes, especially in the morning, we go out to the farthest point, so a driver can drive ten to fifteen minutes depending on the bus route to get to that farthest point out before they start coming back to the school. So in the afternoons, it'll work the exact opposite. They'll drive out to the farthest point and drop the kids off, and it can be a ten to fifteen minute ride back to the school as well.
Dr. Hamm, can I ask you a question real quick?
Absolutely.
So before we get into, I guess, thoughts on this, is there a busing logistics situation or I guess time threshold that is the upper limit of what is actually able and like feasible, basically? Is if we create in a way that's really efficient and staffing-wise makes the most sense and financially makes the most sense, but the bus routes are two hours and twenty minutes, is there a break point where impracticality over, like overrules any decisions that make sense numerically?
Wow, that's a great question.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think the best way to answer that would be whatever discussions you all have, if you start formulating some ideas about what you might do, we can look at those scenarios. We won't be able to give you specifics because it comes down to who's enrolled, where, and if they're going to ride the bus or not.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can give you some ideas that we've already been toying with about if something happens, we will, uh, you know, will this be more destructive for bus routes versus productive? Um, and we have some thoughts about that, just based on where our current attendance zones are and those types of things, yes.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
So that's all I have, just, uh, a reminder that as you do deliberate, I will be in touch with the folks at NC State with Itra, you know, based on whatever you come up with. And the sooner we can do that, the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I say one thing before we get started on this?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, I, from my perspective, I have a couple of thoughts on this and I don't know how we're going to discuss this and round and turn, however we're going to do this. Um, I think something that makes sense as a business owner who's thinking about this purely with no emotion and only looking at the numbers of everything, um, is that we put a framework on top of whatever our decision is, is that we try to create a scenario, two or three, that seem like the most, uh, practical. And then we can view those scenarios through two lenses. One's transportation-wise, what makes the most logistical sense? And then two, staffing-wise, we obviously have an abundance of opportunity for the staffing positions that we have. Create a, a puzzle piece grid, if you will, where if we consolidate school one and two, how they would fit in, which of the options that we do for consolidation discussion, how that would staffing-wise be most optimally distributed across the new schools as well. So whatever option path, I think we decide to investigate, the two investigation points would be, let's, in my opinion, we find one, two, or three different consolidation plans as a goal, and then have logistics and staffing look at both of those to see then which is the most practical after we look at whatever schema we want to look at.
I think where we're going to start tonight, though, is just...
Yeah, not for tonight.
Yeah. What we're going to do is start with just, just the bare bones type of thing because you can really get into the minutia of it because there's no ideal ever when you have distance and you have staffing and you have kids, because we're talking about children. Uh, so everybody can say, this is what my thoughts are right now. That doesn't mean that our thoughts don't change, we don't discuss and whatever. And that's what we'll do in the next work session. Now, Ms. LeBrecque is not able to be with us, but we have her presentation, I'll read that. And I thought what we do maybe is just kind of go around, and then when we get to Ms. LeBrecque's seat, I'll just read hers and I'll do mine last. And, you know, and we may come up by next time with another one nobody mentioned, but that gives us a starting point. And you're right, we have to consider all the options. We have to consider, um, the effect on students and families, our transportation, our finances, staffing. It's a lot to think about, it really is.
Ms. Williams, if I could, um, just interject something about the statutory process here. I know you've sort of been through this before, but...
Right.
Before closing or consolidating any school, there's two things in statute that any board has to do, which is to have a study and have a public hearing. And so you have had some studies done, as you know. Um, I think you would at least update those, so that would be an opportunity to study the effect on transportation, the effect on, um, educational opportunities, things like that. Um, so that would happen before any final vote was taken.
Okay, thank you. As it, excuse me, as, as it relates to, uh, excuse me, consolidation, that's, that's where I'm going to start, uh, because I haven't, I don't think we've dealt with, uh, redistricting because that's going to depend on what, and if we consolidate anything. So, one of the thoughts that I have as it relates to consolidation is to, uh, basically close a southern area elementary school because, and whole idea for me is that we are going to have to do a couple of things at Holly. We're going to have to rebuild it, which we can't do because we don't have the funds. And the other one is to close it. And if we close it, we got to do something with students. So my thoughts are, if we close it, which we are going to have to do, or it's going to get condemned at some point if we don't do that. That's my opinion. We could move the students to, uh, we could close, uh, Creedmoor as an elementary school and move those students to either Tar River or Mount Energy and, uh, move the Holly students to Creedmoor, which would become Holly Middle School as opposed to Creedmoor Elementary. So the question in my mind, if we do that, has to do with what do we need to do to make an elementary school a, uh, middle school? And, uh, I, I think most of the, as far as the students go, most of the students would fit in that school if, uh, if we go that route. And my, my thoughts, the reason for doing this is to make students and community the least amount of disruptiveness as we move kids around in this, in the, uh, system. Uh, the schools are not that far apart and it's close to, uh, the high school. The other thing that came to mind because I was under the impression, the impression that the, um, number of students at, uh, Holly Middle may not fit into, uh, Creedmoor. And, uh, if that was the case, we could always consider a second scenario, which would be, uh, making Wilton a K-eight school, which would take some of the kids out of Holly because I think students that's there now in the fifth grade, a lot of them would probably stay there through sixth, seventh, eighth grade, maybe. And of course, that's just a scenario as a second option in case the first one doesn't work out in terms of moving, uh, the number of kids that we have. There are, of course, in terms of preparing it for maybe next school year, it would be the less, uh, disruptive as a case to moving students and whatever else needed to be moved, which would be kids, uh, furniture and all the other things that goes with students. That's a general idea of where I'm, where I'm coming from. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that somebody might, you might have based on what I've said.
We can move on. I'll read Ms. LeBrecque's idea. Wilton K-eight Leadership Academy, split Creedmoor Elementary grades among remaining southern elementary schools. Stovall-Shaw K-eight, one grade added each year, K-six next year, K-seven the following, and K-eight the third year. Split Holly between Wilton and Butner Middle School and do not sell properties. Make Holly campus pre-K center and update athletics potentially partner with Parks and Recs.
Uh, not to Lindsay.
Well, our last meeting, when, uh, I think Stan shared us the cost to repair Holly Middle School and what the, this soon would be eliminated, be exhausted by, what, twenty-twenty-six, all those things we have to take into consideration. And I like the idea of making Creedmoor Elementary a middle school and then having maybe Wilton, Mount Energy, and of course, the school of choice, the parents may send their kids to the school, schools about that way here. But, um, I know a lot, a lot of people in Creedmoor, in the Grand County area here have very sentimental and values towards Holly Middle School. It's all about the funding, the money there. Uh, you know, I worked there for two years there, very pretty when, where things painted, you know, yards all done, the manicure here, but when it rained between the old building and new building here, I was a pond of water there. I saw maintenance there several times, trying to find a way to redirect the water there, just could not make the water not be a pond there. So we had to jump across, uh, to get to the old building there. So I think it's based on just the building just is in, it's more money we have to spend on that building now. And probably more cost effective that we were to try to upgrade Creedmoor to be a middle school, um, for kids to transfer to. We still have fields there between South Granville, Holly, and new rec, oh, rec department there, that they could be able to use in case they have to, to, to improve an, uh, athletic program here in Grand County. We heard a big school about that not long ago here. So I support that idea. That's my own.
Dr. Frederick, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, so I, I have two, I guess, strategies. One of them is kind of financially driven and the other one is pretty similar, but is math, I guess mathematically driven. Uh, both of them, the thing that I think is most important has to do with percentage of occupancy being the thing that dictates how we're making decisions. Because I think having that criteria be the marker will not only, um, it, it will solve a number of our problems, I think. So, um, scenario one, and this is the mathematical one, would be to close or consolidate Creedmoor Elementary and Mount Energy and redistribute them to the southern other elementary schools of Butner Stem, Wilton, and West Oxford. All of them can take that population and the elementary schools would, instead of all being plus or minus seven percent from sixty-four, would be all in the low eighties to low nineties. So it would increase the percentage of occupancy by twenty percent across the board by doing that strategy.
Excuse me, could you go back over that?
Yep.
Where you started.
Close Creedmoor, close Mount Energy, and redistribute to Butner Stem, West Oxford, and Wilton. Essentially, I have a map-up of where the schools draw based on population, and I think that makes the most sense and from a commuting perspective, doesn't change things all that much either. Um, and again, the percentages is that would essentially take the average percentage of sixty-four percent occupancy in an elementary school to about eighty-four percent occupancy in all of the elementary schools. The second half of that would be consolidating Holly based on financial reasons and splitting them somewhat evenly between Butner Stem Middle and North Granville Middle. It is less practical, but it will make the occupancy change from fifty-eight percent to averaging eighty-seven percent. Now again, some of these we'll have to look at the logistics, but in my opinion, uh, for a couple of reasons, I don't think our initial plan should be to, uh, remake Creedmoor Middle, well, Creedmoor Middle, sorry, convert Creedmoor Elementary to a middle school. Um, one, based on twenty-twenty's construction projections, that was going to take from summer twenty-twenty to fall of twenty-one. Um, I think we all have personal experience with construction timelines and availability being a lot more erratic and longer. Uh, if we wanted to convert that, I would guess that would be at least a three-year process. That is a pure guess.
Are you talking about converting Creedmoor?
Yes. So that's why my plan does not include that, is because of timeline of that. And that would also allow us to save, again, the projection from two, almost three years ago was the better part of like, what, eight million dollars or something like that? Construction costs have all gone up. I imagine we can comfortably call that over ten million dollars now. Not only would it be more efficient from an occupancy perspective, it would save us the better part of ten million dollars and not take three years. Now, the second schema has everything to do with the finances. If we use which schools currently have the largest outstanding maintenance costs as the determining factor for how we decide what we're going to be closing, we would be closing Wilton Elementary School and Creedmoor. Now, closing Wilton and Creedmoor would allow that refundeling of students to go to Tar River to Butner Stem and West Oxford still. And based on outstanding maintenance, we would not have to spend two-point-three million dollars on Wilton for the maintenance costs that are on the ledger right now. Uh, the Creedmoor one, I think we can agree, is a, is low-hanging fruit for elementary consolidation, but that plan still does not convert it into a middle school because of above-mentioned costs. So Plan Two would be close Wilton, Creedmoor. Again, that takes the average occupancy from, what did I say, sixty-eight percent? Sixty-four percent? To approximate, this one's the least of, uh, is less... percent, to approximate, this one's the least of, is less efficient than the one above. It would make the occupancies average about seventy-nine to eighty percent. So again, the occupancy percentage on System One goes from sixty-four percent elementary occupancy to about eighty-five percent elementary occupancy. System Two, which is financially driven, takes it from sixty-four percent occupancy to about seventy-eight percent school occupancy. Now, for fun numbers, following Coach Carroll's presentation, if we wanted to consolidate Central, and again, this is not a long-term thing, this is until we, by consolidating, the goal is to increase teacher presence with the students, have more academic and athletic opportunity because of numeric, like numbers, all that kind of stuff, I propose this as a, I, I bring this up because none of these are permanent things, these are all short-term things, that we can reopen these and refill them when the numbers in the county make sense for that. But if we consolidate Central, for whatever reason we would like, we can call it population because our high schools are averaging, well, Central has sixty-four percent occupancy, Webb has forty-nine percent occupancy. If we consolidate Central into the other two schools, it would average to ninety percent occupancy in the high schools. It would fill a lot of our teaching positions as well, as fun numbers. So those are my two plans based on occupancy and budget.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay. So what you just said about closing Granville Central?
Yeah.
Any proposals for what to do with the buildings there?
I haven't thought that too much.
Because it's pretty new.
It is pretty new, and I don't know, that's why I don't think, I haven't thought that far ahead about that, I'm just purely looking at occupancy numbers, because, yeah, I mean, I know academics are incredibly important and more important long-term than athletics, that's an arguable thing that we could talk about for sure, but at least in lower-income counties, which is what we have, more rural counties, athletics are huge driving factors for how people not only look forward to school, but things that keep them out of trouble after school and stuff like that. I know we have issues with violence right now. A way for that to be curtailed is having fully staffed coaching and teams that have a lot of more, a lot more draw and attractiveness within the school itself and in the community itself, and allowing us to focus more resources, attention, and students for more successful sport programs, I think solves a number of problems as well.
I have a question. It may be answered by Dr. Winborn. Excuse me. Do you know how, approximately how many students that are in the Webb District that currently go to Granville Central by choice?
I'll look that up.
Okay. All right. You can get back with me.
Yeah, and, and one thing I, I don't know if we're at a discussion point, but something that I was just looking at the numbers, to keep in mind if we're converting Wilton to a K to eight, is that Wilton is, their total square footage of the campus is forty-eight thousand, Holly's total campus size is ninety-eight thousand, so, or square footage size. So if we, and it's at half capacity right now, so effectively, we're utilizing forty-nine thousand square foot of, feet of Holly right now, and if we try to put the majority of those kids into Wilton, I think we're going to have a, a, a facility size problem.
Ms. Hayes? I mean, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, well, you know, just listening to the discussions and a lot of those things, I had been, you know, grappling with myself with regards to that. As far as the high schools, and you know, also listening to our, the briefing earlier with regards to the sports, yes, based on the number, you know, students at those schools, I do feel that there should be a consolidation of one of the three schools. And of course, I would recommend that that consolidation would go with JF Webb. Do I need to pull this up? I feel that that consolidation would be with JF Webb and Granville Central. I, I know we've had this, and there's been so many studies done, and along with those great studies was always the breakdown of things that we have looked at with regards to the space and with regards to all of the fixing things up, because when I first came on board, it was going to be ten million to do Holly, so I think that's when we definitely first started looking at what, what are we going to do about that. But I, with Holly, I also have heard you say, I really feel that with that being the case, that we would go to two middle schools, and the children being redistributed to, you know, one of the two. Okay, so that's going to be one of the two other middle schools, and you know, the closing of Holly itself. I also did look at the research, and we talked a little bit about this, you know, the schools and how old they are. South Granville built in nineteen ninety-three, and of course, Granville Central built in two thousand, I'm sorry, additional work in nineteen ninety-three was built in nineteen sixty-two, South Granville. Granville Central built in two thousand and seven, and had some additional work done at Granville Central in two thousand and fifteen, and at South Granville in nineteen ninety-three. So just looking at, you know, the work that's been put out there, and you know, just always thinking about the budget, because we know our budget is dwindling, we know as we lose students and we lose the funds, we will have to do some type of consolidation. And I would look at dropping down to two high schools, dropping down to two middle schools, and with the closure of at least one to two elementary schools. And you know, we just have to look at that being in with the studies that was done, because you know, having to relocate, having to redistrict or draw the lines again for everyone, and what it's going to cost, you know, that as well, plus keeping these old buildings up. Mr. Graham gave us some figures just the other time we met about the, you know, astronomical cost that's going to continue to hit us budget-wise. So we have to do something to get us steady so that we can then grow back our public school system again. So those are my recommendations. And looking at as far as what you drop down, what, we drop down to two schools as we drop down to two high schools and two middle schools, and with the closure of some elementary schools, looking at those locations and where they're located at, because we have to keep in mind the, the parents will really have some input and say-so into what's going to impact them and their children, and our children in the school system. And as my guy would say, and that's all I have to say about that, we know who he is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay.
Ms. Hayes?
Yeah.
Your turn.
So, you know, I've been thinking about this since the work session, and I kind of knew this was coming, and then Coach Carroll came tonight, and he just sort of like threw this big old monkey wrench right into all of it. So that's really tough. For everybody watching, like, this is not an easy discussion for anybody to have, and I don't want anybody to ever think that we, I don't take this lightly, I don't think anybody else does either. So I guess my recommendation is, I'm going to have to agree with Ms. Anderson, where we are going to have to do something drastic, and you know, everybody I think here is in agreement that, that something has to be done for the students at Holly, that that campus can no longer be maintained. So I am going to recommend that we move Holly to Granville Central, and go back to the, the two-high-school configuration with students at JF Webb and South Granville. If we're talking about capacity, we could always go back to two middle schools, if that makes the most sense, if that's what the board members agree on. I think the, if that is something that we want to look at, I absolutely think the best thing to do is to put them at Granville Central and Northern Granville Middle School. Logistically, I think that makes the most sense. And unfortunately, we're still going to have to talk about closing an elementary school as well, at least one. And I think I'm going to agree with pretty much what everybody else here said, that logistically and financially Creedmoor Elementary makes the most sense at this point. I would also be willing to look at or consider making Wilton and St. Valshaw K eight centers if that's something that we felt might be able to draw some kids back from charter school, or prevent kids from leaving to go to charter school, because I've heard from a lot of parents and administration that we're losing kids because of middle school situations. So I think that's also an important consideration. I'm not sold on it one way or the other, I think there's a lot of consideration to take into that, you know, talk to the administration, is it feasible? Of course, we'd have to build on it, you'd have to add sixth grade first, and see if it even works, see if families are even interested in it, you know, see if it's feasible, and then go from there.
Any questions? I think I'm. Sort of seems like every time we have something come up, it gives us more questions, and that's why we'll have that work session. And I would encourage anybody to, for staff, and for, I guess, streamlining the process of answering those questions, if we direct them to Dr. McLean, and she can get them to the appropriate people, if there's some information we feel like we need before the next meeting. Okay, I'll go with mine. Okay. Mine is to close Creedmoor Elementary School and relocate students to other elementary schools, convert Creedmoor Elementary School to a middle school for G C Holly students, make Wilton Elementary a K eight leader in me school, and then consider a K eight option in the northern area, either for the coming year or in the future. And I think this option has potential to attract and keep more students in Granville County schools. The Holly students would have a safer and aesthetically pleasing environment, and the international back-to-the-art program for Holly Middle can move forward. It would be the least disruptive. The option would provide sufficient space for growth until the expected major population growth comes to Granville County without necessitating any new construction. We heard from the people throughout the county that are involved with subdivisions, some of the subdivisions may not produce a whole lot of kids for us, but some of them will. And the Butner Stem area is already picking up population. I wasn't going to go through all this, but I'll try to do it quickly. Campus at Creedmoor can accommodate the Holly students, and the classrooms are at least the same size as the current facility, and most of them are larger. The health and P E program can be accommodated with creative scheduling and some use of the current Holly and South Granville High School athletic facilities. The facilities and fields at Holly can be used for athletic students proximity. It's in excellent condition with no air quality issues, a lot of work has been done to Creedmoor. Some students could possibly earn high school credits as electives with the proximity of South Granville High School. Pods could be added when and if needed, and the capacity percentage at affected schools will increase, maybe not as much as some folks would hope, but it would increase. When the expected growth necessitates a new and larger middle school, campus could become an annex of South Granville High School or repurposed for another purpose. Conversion can be done over the summer break, and the students can be moved to other elementary schools with minimal redistricting. On the Wilton, it would expand the highly successful lead-in me program and would, as Ms. Hayes was talking about, offer the K eight option, which we have had many families express an interest in having something other than just going from elementary to middle school. It would decrease the student numbers for the converted middle school, which would be at about full capacity if all sixth through eighth graders were housed at Creedmoor. And it would open up more additional space. I don't know if everybody had a chance to see the diagram and the information that was sent out the other day, but that was based on all of the students being there. And students would have opportunity to participate in sports at their base school. Now, the cost to do the Holly conversion, as the information we got, if we don't do athletic facilities, and we do the basics, it will come in probably around four or five hundred thousand dollars. Painting, maybe some toilets, some minor kinds of things. It won't be like building a new middle school, it won't be like adding a wing. So I think it's cost-effective to do that. My concern is transportation and keeping kids on the bus longer. The other consideration that I worry about is unintended consequences, which, we have a lot of kids go to Granville Central that don't want to go to Webb, we have kids going here, there, and yonder because of our choice programs, and I think we have to kind of weigh that, because if we lose kids, we're not going to save money. We're just trading dollars, or we may get in worse shape. The growth is coming, I feel like something like this could possibly keep us where for the next five, six, seven years, we wouldn't have to worry about building a school. Now, one of the things that's come up that Dr. Frederick mentioned was the roof at Wilton, and he's very correct, but all of our schools have maintenance schedules, and it's coming up, and that's true. We did not get our grant, and we resubmitted it for building a new middle school. But we can also propose a grant to do some things to a Wilton, a South Granville, and our high schools to give them a better look. I don't know that we'll get it, but we have a fairly good chance, because we didn't get it the last two times, it's about our turn. But I think eventually, we hopefully could get some additional funds to do that. But as we weigh it, you, I have to look at what I suspect parents will do or not do. The transportation is a big, big factor, and some kids, parents take them to school, some, and then they have to go to work, and some kids get on the bus, and it's a mixed bag. So I think in any of these, all of them have good points. Some of them save more than others, some save a little, but just looking down the road for about five years, I think it would be something that would work without having to disrupt so many people in the community. That's just my thoughts. Any questions?
Another question, still a grant, that's from the state, a group apply for grants, is the grant from the state?
Well, we applied for the middle school when the needs-based grants came out. That's being funded by the lottery program, and from what I understand from the conference, they expect that program to continue. And eventually, hopefully, we can get some money if we can show we are refurbishing some schools and doing some things. Most of the counties that have gotten it are in the really, really poor areas. But one of the things is, if you haven't gotten one in three years, you have a better chance. This would be our third year applying. I don't know that we'd get it, but like I said, you've got maintenance on every school we've got. We've got a lot of maintenance, and we really need to get a lot of things done at a lot of schools. So that's something I hope we can apply for. That's my, my two cents.
What, what kind of dollar figure are we talking about with grants? I mean, is it a five hundred thousand dollar grant? Is it, I mean, what are we talking about?
I think a lot would depend on how much it would cost to move furniture this summer. Do you have any idea, Dr. Winborn, what kind of cost that would be?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about how much, yeah, the lottery grants, how much money are we talking about receiving?
I, I can probably address that. So it's called the Needs-Based Capital, Public School Capital Fund, and it's funded by the legislature. The grants are capped at, they, they prioritize new construction, the grants are capped at thirty million for an elementary, forty million for a middle school, and fifty million for a high school. And they, but certainly poverty level of the county is one of the main criteria, so Granville has not, has applied the last two years and hasn't risen to getting a grant.
Yeah, it's not a sure thing. It never is.
Chair, a couple of things that, excuse me, we haven't talked about, that I think is important, and that's the impact that whatever we do is going to have on the community, because the impact it have on the community to a larger degree depends on where the parent decides to send their child's school at. decides to send their child's school at. And the least disruptive we can be as to what's going on right now, I think the better off we're going to be when it comes to keeping students as we do this consolidation. Now, I think we all know that we have to do something with Holly if nothing else. I mean, that's, that, that's a crisis as far as I'm concerned. And I think that's one of the things that we need to focus on first before we move into these other areas that, I mean, there's a lot of things been talked about here tonight, a lot of scenarios, a lot of things that could happen. Obviously, we're not going to be able to do all of that and get those kids out of Holly as soon as possible. So I, as we move forward, it would be my suggestion is everybody sort of focus on what we can do with Holly first, and then move on to the next scenario. Now, we might be doing more than one thing at one time, but we have to get to that before we can get to anyplace else as it relates to what's best for the students, and that's why we're here. And that's my bottom line.
Well, we have a lot of work to do on the work session. I do think that probably all of us have some questions about different things. And like I said, if we'll just direct them to our superintendent, she can get them to whoever needs to answer it, and then send a copy to everybody so we all get the same information.
Can I make one general statement before we finish this up? I just feel like I ought to make the uncomfortable comment that, to a degree, I like portions of all of these, but something we keep talking about is convenience and commuting and all of those things. With respect, I think that's less of a priority because then, then what we can do to strategically create and cultivate the best academic and best, best academic opportunity and best staffed opportunities for our schools, because I think Jamar, Stan, and other faculty can create wonderful studies that show that percentage of staffed schools increases academic quality and all that kind of stuff. And I say all of this because if commute inconvenience was important, we wouldn't be losing so many people to charter schools. There are people that are happy to drive further and make large inconveniences and disrupt their life greatly because of quality education. So I think that is something that needs to be said, and I think all of us should consider that when we're discussing convenience and community impact with some of the recommendations that we're making.
I would agree to a point. I would just say that I wouldn't particularly use the word convenience. I think when people are working and, or their children live a long, long way, and they're on the bus a long time, we do have to consider that transportation piece and how it affects those families. We just do. So many people work in the Durham-Raleigh area. And, you know, we have people from all varying walks of life, all, you know. We're not going to get everybody in public schools, but I don't want to lose too many more.
Yeah, I totally agree. I'm just saying, from my perspective, it shouldn't be the first thing that we consider.
We have to balance a lot, a lot of balls in the air right now. Because there are studies that, about how long children should stay on the bus and how it affects their ability to get home, have homework, have a life, that kind of thing. So we do have an unusual county, the way it's, it's very long. And if we could just move things around on the map, it would be very nice. It would be very nice. But yeah, it's, it's, the academics are a consideration. But we have to be realistic about what our parents will do and can do in our buses. Any other thoughts?
Madam Chair, when should we, when will this decision be made? I know we're trying to get things right.
That's a good question. I think what we'll do at our next session, we'll come to see if we can come to some consensus is, you know, what we think. And if we do, I think we go in a certain direction, then we have to do our public hearing or hearings.
And complete a study.
And complete this study. Some of them would just be an update. So that shouldn't take too long.
Yeah. Those studies, of course, before the public hearing, right? Because that's where we get the studies and look at the information and all the pros and cons or costs and everything.
You can do it in either way, but I think typically you've had the study first before deciding if it's worth going to a public hearing.
Right.
I know that we've had some public hearings already. So if we come to a consensus that reflects a public hearing that we've already had, do we still, do we have to have another one or no?
I think it just has to be updated.
Yeah, I mean, the, the statute doesn't really address that. And so I think it would depend on, I mean, partially, the board may decide to just because the public wants to be heard. But it would depend in part on, you know, our public hearings were worded specifically, you know, are we going to close this school, or are we closing that one and consolidating these two? So I think we'd have to look at, was, was it the same proposal, really?
Yeah. If you were moving the Holly students to two different middle schools, for instance, you would have to have a study to close Holly. And I don't know that we had one.
No, I don't believe we ever had a study or a hearing on closing Holly. I think if you move the entire Holly to another campus, I think you could argue that's not a closure, especially if you're keeping the same. The, the best way to figure it out is, we're going to end up with fewer schools at the end. And so, you know, whether it's you're closing Creedmoor and moving Holly, or you're closing, you know.
And just to be clear, I, like, that, that question wasn't because I didn't want to hear from the public. It's more because of the time constraint, because I know it's, the administration needs a certain amount of time, and we have to announce a certain amount of time ahead of time for a public hearing. So that, that's all that was in my head.
Definitely.
Yeah, we definitely need to fast track what we do as best we can, for the sake of our administration and our families.
Yeah, sorry, I was going to ask that. The previous studies that we did, I guess I have two questions. How long did those studies take? I mean, was it a month? And then how much lead time do we need to give the public just so that we can kind of forecast our next couple of months and stuff like that?
The studies, it varied depending on the, you know, like, studying converting Creedmoor to Ha, to a middle school took longer because we needed architect input and cost estimates. I'm looking at Dr. Winborn. So, you know, updating one, if it's information that the staff already has and they don't need to, like, hire consultants, right, obviously takes less.
Dr. Winborn, with converting Creedmoor with the things we were mentioning, would that necessitate structural and having to hire all that? And, okay. So it would be just... Well, yeah, okay. But it would, would not, what has to be done would not necessitate that be a requirement. Okay. But if we do, as a board, decide to go to two different, split the kids up, Holly is, as a school, would be closed, so we'd have to have the closure study.
That's right.
And the public hearing.
There was in fact a G C Holly school closure study, grade reassignment.
Okay.
But it may not be the exact grade reassignment that we presented. And that study is included in the link that was shared in the last meeting. There's, you know, all of those studies are here.
So should I move to close discussion until the work session and move on in the agenda?
I think that's a grand idea. I suspect all of us will go home tonight and have about 20 more questions circling in our brains.
So, so moved?
Yeah, we, we can come to a consensus on that, I think.
So we have the class size waiver and the... Well, we, we, and the, the 8.08 is the seating arrangement.
Yeah, let me get that.
So senior staff, we're ready to adjourn.
We've got class size waivers next.
Good evening, board members, and welcome, Ms. Hayes, to the board. Tonight, I was going to present some information to you regarding our class size waiver that we are applying for. Each year, in the fall and in the spring, we must submit or make sure that we are in compliance with the state's class size law. This year, as we ran through the reports and evaluated our numbers, there are two sites where we are requesting a waiver, and that's at Tar River Elementary School for grades one and two, and Mount Energy Elementary School for grade one. There is greater than 2% growth at those schools, be it either folks are moving in or either for school of choice. And so we are applying for a waiver. We are working with the staff or the administrators of those schools to, of course, we would like to get extra teachers, and we're still looking for teachers in addition. So that would be additional teacher at Mount Energy for sure. And we'll work with Tar River on a best plan to make sure those classes are in compliance with the state law. So our recommendation is that we, the board approve our application for a waiver this year.
Board members, we're bringing this to you tonight because we must have action in order to send this up the ladder to the state. On one hand, this is a good thing, we have more babes. On the other hand, because we have an overage, we need board approval.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for board approval?
I'd make a motion that we approve the waiver as requested.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And I think the next item we were going to discuss, reconfigure, another reconfiguration, but a little bit easier one, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to get crazy, but we could probably fit another 10 chairs in here. So, I mean, I think that would be helpful. I just, I mean, I don't, not to make this feel crowded, but to make a better efficient use of over there so that we can get some members of the public. And we probably had, like, we, we always at the beginning of the movies have, or the meetings have these beautiful accolades and awards for staff and students and all that kind of stuff. And I think it's a shame that the people we're acknowledging should have to stand at the beginning of the meetings. So if we can facilitate a little bit better seating arrangement, I think that'd be well received.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
That's no problem. We can handle that. What do we have, two rows tonight? We can add an additional row, something of that nature. Absolutely.
Could the podium be moved up?
I don't know if the podium should be moved because of technology. We'll see if we can do that. But we certainly can add another row of chairs and make it a little more comfortable, at least for the beginning of the meeting.
Right, yeah, for sure.
Yes, sir.
That one was easy to solve.
I was hoping to do a layout for it.
We can work on that.
I was looking at the back portion there with that nice seating back there, but we would want people sitting back behind us.
You have a lot of reals on the couch.
I see, yeah.
That's true. We could move the tables. We could move the whole table.
We didn't meet here before COVID, so. I said, we never met here before COVID. We met in another office. It was much smaller.
Okay. All righty. Are we doing the financial? Budget update. There we go. Got you. All right.
We have a financial update, and I believe that's Dicky Hines.
Yes. Absolutely. Good evening, board members. Our financial, this is our monthly financial update regarding COVID funds. And in front of you, this first page is, of course, this entire report is as of October 31st. If you remember correctly, this is always kind of a month behind due to the timing of the report. This first page is a summary of the COVID funds that we have remaining in the district. At this time, the remaining funds have been earmarked for projects and require DPI approval for any changes. You can see that we have just nearly 14 million remaining in, in our COVID funding. But again, those funds have been earmarked at this point. The remainder of the document is the state-provided report on our fund usage. Yes, if you could scroll through. The first section of the report shows the funds by program. And our total expenditures as of October 31st were 13,269,781. Our total allotment is 27,72,534. And the remaining pages reflect those same expenditures, but by type of expenditure or object code. You can see on the charts, on the la, on the second to last page, that the majority of the expenditures, 73.2%, are salary and benefits. It's on the next chart that you see. The next largest expenditure is listed as supplies and materials, and that includes our computer purchases. Are there any questions about our COVID funds? Thank you. Okay, the next item on, on the agenda is our budget update. And, you know, we've, hopefully, this is our last budget update, and the next thing you'll hear from me is our actual budget. As you, if you remember correctly, what we have been waiting for is our, the final information from DPI regarding our new and growing charter schools as well as our trade-in amounts for restart schools. And this first page is an update on our new and growing charter schools, the reported month. And I'm, I'm getting some clarification from DPI. I've gotten two numbers, 140 and 104, and I'm not sure which one is the type though, so I'm waiting to hear back from that. However, the total reduction of state funds, of course, did not change. So we did see a reduction of about $650,000 in state funds. And of course, as it, as that relates to our local funds, our month one total number of charter school students in, Granville County students in charter schools is 2,061 students, which is about 200 students more than we started at the, at the beginning of last year. Our anticipated payments due to that increased number also increased by approximately 600,000. So, yes, ma'am.
Our ADM on the 20-day was about a difference of 85. So this additional amount of kids that went to charter that didn't leave us, they just didn't come. And enroll in kindergarten or first grade?
That's difficult to predict, but that's probably one of the scenarios, yes. Absolutely. And of course, you know, we saw a big reduction of student enrollment overall during COVID. So we're seeing increases in numbers in, in our, in our regular schools as well as charter schools. So, you know, we're, we're in that. Everybody's increasing at this point as well. All right, next slide. The restart funding, this is just general information for you. Again, our total restart funds is, is 20% of our total state funding. And what's critical to remember is that this is not new funds. We simply have to reallocate all of the little different pots of money, those PRCs or program codes that we receive from the state. We have to basically, you know, bar from Peter, pay Paul, that, that kind of, that kind of thing for our budget. And as a, as a reminder, we have the four restart schools in the district. And as a, as a reminder, we have the four restart schools in the district, Buttnerson Middle, Northern Granville Middle, Creedmore Elementary, and West Oxford Elementary. Next slide, please. I wanted to kind of refresh our memories from the budget proposal that the Hill Group did for us back in the spring when they were preparing the budget for, for the county commissioners. The big item was the effect of the mandated $15 an hour for classified employees, that minimum $15 an hour. The Hill Group predicted or estimated that that would, that cost effect to our local budget would be about $1.1 million. And, and the details of their proposal, their expansion request is right there. And I just, I'm, I'm here to tell you that they were right on that number. We are moving approximately $1.1 million of positions and classified positions into our local funds. And I just want to remind us all that the county commissioners in that budget proposal supported us in, in that correction of that $15 an hour compression. And if you go to the next slide, what that decompression plan looks like is, is basically a three-year plan. This first year, the county funded us for a third of that, that amount that we required, for a third of that, with the idea that we would use our fund balance to pay the, the other two thirds. Next year, it's going to reverse. The county's going, it has agreed to pay for two thirds of that, and we would pay the, the remaining third. And then that third year, the, the county would fully fund that, that plan. This is with the assumption that the state doesn't provide any additional funding to manage this decompression. So I just wanted to put that in everybody's mind. So keep that red number, that 938,000 in your brain for just a second. If you go to the next slide, if you remember from our November meeting, we also presented and you all approved this recruitment and retention plan. And the one-year cost, we talked about using fund balance to fund this, is 933,000. Okay, so that's that other part. If you go to the next slide, just wanted to talk a little bit about use of fund balance. The recommended practice is to, is to maintain 8% of our general operating expenses in fund balance. And I have that little chart, that little calculation up there. Our current operating expenses for the 22, 23 year, 77, just over 77 million dollars. 8% of that comes to be 6.1 million. And if you look in that next little chart, according to our 19, excuse me, 20, 20, 2021 audit, our fund balance was just, just under 8 million. So we would have approximately 1.8 million available above and beyond that 8% that we'd like to maintain in fund balance. So I, I consider that available funds. What's important to remember is that we haven't finished our audit process yet for 21, 22. And if you may remember that we're adding probably, I don't, I don't like to give firm numbers until that audit's finished, but between 900 to a million, 900,000 to a million dollars we added to fund balance for, for last year. So based on the, the previous two slides, we have already agreed to use approximately 1.8 million dollars in fund balance for this coming year. Next slide, please. So the next steps, I would like to meet with the, the finance committee. I'll be contacting you soon for next week, just to give you some more, you know, nitty gritty details about what the budget looks like. And I'm looking to do the budget resolution presentation at our January meeting, if, if that's the pleasure of the board. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for all that hard work.
Yes. I had a number and then I moved them around.
Okay, it is time for our 10-minute break. Do I have a motion to go into closed session after our 10-minute break to discuss 11.01A in accordance with North Carolina General Statute, 143.318.11A6, 143-318.11A3, 143.318.11A5, and Section 115C321 for personnel and attorney-client privilege? And you do not have to repeat that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. See you back in 10 minutes. Our first item is to vote on the approval of the certified and classified personnel exhibits. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, um, let's see if we have any other motions. The next thing is upcoming events and announcement dates to remember. I probably most, I think the 15th, apparently, four, one, two, three, four, five schools have something. So obviously, you can't be at everything. I'll be at Wilton, but hopefully, somebody can get to some of these. And I know December the 8th, the Holly and South Granville Winter Concert's going on. There's a J F Webb Choir and Band Music Show. And they really do appreciate it when board members show up. And it's good for us, too, because we get to see what they're doing, and it's always December 19th is our scheduled Board of Educational Mark session here to talk about things we talked about in consolidation, redistricting, and so forth. We have the time there for, I believe, four o'clock. And in thinking about it, that's fine with me. These things can go two hours usually. If anyone feels like we need to move it up to three, we can do that, too. I'm fine either way. So if you'd like to think about that, or we can change it.
We've even met at two o'clock.
Yeah, we have.
For work sessions, so it's up to you all thinking about time of year.
Are we doing policies? We're not doing policies that they write.
I think with everything we've got going on, I think the Policy Committee for any future policies, we've already got some coming up, we'll be talking about in January. But to go reviewing on the Policy Committee, I don't really think we'll do too much with that.
So if we met Mrs. Williams and Mrs. LaForte, just if we could meet earlier in the day, if that was suitable by the board to go and come in. Would we met earlier about the agenda, Ms. Williams and Mrs. LaForte, that was one meeting, if we could come in earlier during the day, if it was suitable with the board?
Dr. Frederick, I don't know what your schedule would be, so whatever works for you.
That works for me.
Two o'clock, fine?
Two o'clock, yeah. I, I will be remoting into that one, so however that gets accomplished, I'll work on.
Okay.
Two o'clock on the?
Two o'clock. And you're going to be remote, too?
Remoting also.
Okay.
I have like a buzzer system about who this is.
Do we want to do it here, or do we want to do it at the central office? Does it matter?
That works as well.
Would that be easier? Are we going to live stream it?
You certainly could. It's a popular topic.
Is it easier to live stream it here?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll stay here then.
So Maripato, the 19th, at two?
Two.
Two o'clock?
Okay. Y'all are so agreeable. December 22nd through January 3rd is holiday break and annual leave. And I guess we're out of school on the first Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
So the Monday, we'll have our regular board meeting, will be the ninth back here. And winter graduation. And I would agree with what you said about winter graduation and summer graduation. I enjoy them all, but those are special because sometimes you've got kids that have gone that extra thing and hung in there and, and got it done, and it's a good feeling, and they're happy. And their families are very happy, too. Just a reminder, any questions you have, just send them to Dr. McLean as far as about finances. She'll get it, get it to the right department. Because sometimes, I think I know who I asked, but sometimes it might not be the right person. So she'll get it there and then get it back to everybody. Okay? Anything else?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. We just want to thank our technology team tonight. They did a great job. I think we've lost them for a quick second. Got one left. Thank you for that, dear. They did a great job. We also want to thank our county commissioners for coming over and sharing with us tonight. We know they had a meeting of their own, and they chose to start their evening with us tonight. So when you get a moment to say thanks, let's thank them. And I understand we had Senator Winslow with us this evening.
General Assembly, so House, he's a House representative.
A representative, Winslow came. Okay, so I got that wrong. Someone sent that to me wrong. But we need to thank him for coming to the swearing in portion of the meeting tonight. So that was pretty big, and we want to be sure to send some thank yous. And so I'll get something out tomorrow. That was nice. That was very nice. I was not aware of that, but I, I got that note just a few minutes ago. So we wanted to take care of that. That was special.
He represents the, you know, the southern portion of Granville County now, and he's, he's very interested in our schools.
Well, we were speaking via email with some folk in his office, and he'll be visiting the district soon. So when we get that day arranged, we'll be, we will be reaching out to make sure we sort of get him into the buildings and get him to know the folk on our board and on the executive team.
Ms. Bodie has expressed an interest in touring the schools in Granville County as well, and mentioned that I don't think she was familiar with Mr. Winslow at the time, but I think she was very interested in having Mr. Sosselman accompany her.
Yes.
So I think we can work some of that out. I think it's good.
Absolutely.
Have voices in the legislature.
We need it.
Respond to Granville County, because we have not had that for a while.
So this is special, so want to make it happen. So anyway, let's, let's be sure to say thank you to those folk who came out and supported tonight. That was nice, very nice.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a new job.
I'm happy to be that.
We have him over here doing that.
I know.
I don't even, we have to have a second. But we'll do it. Yes, do a second.
That is great.
All in favor? Everybody have, have a good weekend. We'll see everybody on the 19th, and some of you we'll see earlier.
And the 14th for the celebration with commissioners. Now, that's at Central Office.